There is a reason. There is a reason.
I call the meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to the July 16th, 2024 Business Meeting of your Ashland City Council. Councillor Hanson will offer the land acknowledgement.
Thank you, Mayor. We acknowledge and honor the Aboriginal people on whose ancestral homelands we work, the Iroquois band of the Shasta Nation, as well as the diverse and vibrant native communities who make their home here today. We honor the First stewards in the Rogue Valley and the lands we love and depend on. Tribes with ancestral lands in and surrounding the geography of the Ashland watershed include the original, past, present, and future Indigenous inhabitants of the Shasta, Takilma, and Athabaskan people. We also recognize and acknowledge the Shasta village of Kwakawka, where the Crow lights that is now the Ashland City Plaza.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Alyssa.
Councillor Hyatt?
Here.
Councillor Bloom?
Here.
Councillor Dale?
Here.
Mayor Graham?
Here.
Councillor Kaplan?
Here.
Councillor Duquesne?
Here.
Councillor Hanson?
Here.
Thank you. So I have a series of announcements tonight. The first one is to make sure that everyone who is here who would like to speak to the council knows how. There are signup sheets along that back left side wall. If you would like to address the council tonight, please fill one of those out and make sure that you identify for us whether you are here to speak on a specific agenda item or whether you are here for public forum, which is where you would talk to us about anything that is not on the agenda. What you will do then is give it to Alyssa, and she will make sure that we get to it ahead of the proper moment. One thing to note is that once we start an agenda item, the time to sign up for that is closed, and that allows me to be able to manage our time. So please make sure that you have filled that form out before we get to that particular agenda item. You will note that our fire danger has moved to extreme. I want to start this evening by thanking our firefighters and everyone else at the city who has responded to the last two fires, both on July 4th and the one that happened last night in the watershed. What we can do to help is to make sure that we are doing our work around our yard. And when I drive around Ashland, I see a lot of really good work that people are doing. We're learning how to be a fire-adapted community together. And I see a lot of cleaner landscapes, people trimming trees back from their homes, that sort of thing. But we are all still dealing with a number of properties where the weeds have gotten very long, they are now dry, and they are dangerous. And so just to remind everyone, if you have a property like that, please deal with it as soon as you can. And remember that now that we are in extreme fire danger, it's important to do that with electrical machinery, not with gas-powered machinery. There is more information on the city's website about how you can safely address your property issues right now. If you have any hazardous fuels that have built up, please take a look at that and let us know if you do see someone in your neighborhood who's got a significant problem. We will do our best to get out and educate them and help them know what they need to do. But it's going to be this way until the rains come in the fall, and so we need to keep working I also have a series of thank yous. First, thank you to the volunteers who have been staffing the cooling center over at the emergency weather shelter at 2200 Ashland Street. It has been open since the heat wave started, and it is only able to be open because we have so many volunteers who come in from the community and help us keep it open. Also, a thank you to staff for getting a contractor onboard ahead of this heat so that we could get that center open. I know that it's been used every day by people who have no other way to get out of the heat. Also wanted to thank the chamber and the staff members who were involved in the Fourth of July festivities. It was really good fun. It's always good fun to be part of Ashland's Fourth of July celebration, and it also takes a lot of work to coordinate it. So thank you to them and to the Ashland Chamber of Commerce. And then also, quite a few folks came out to the Coffee and Conversations event that we had. Councillor Hyatt and Councillor Dale joined me and also Sabrina. And the Ashland Parks and Recreation Commissioners that came out, Jim Bachman and Rick Launt. It was really good conversation. It is a great way to just have a face-to-face conversation with your elected leadership. So take a look at the calendar and see when the next ones are coming. We try to do those three or four times a year, and it's just a very nice informal way to say what's on your mind and talk to people in person. And then we will be moving a couple of agenda items. I know that there are several people here who have come tonight to talk to us about the committees and the recommendations coming from the committees, and also committee chairs who are coming here to present to us this evening. Right now, that's listed as the very last section of items, and what we want to do is move the City Manager and City Attorney search update to the last item on the agenda and move up the committee work plan update and the recommendation from SIRJAC, with the recommendation from SIRJAC coming first in that series. And then finally, on a happier note, and you got a little preview of it right before we started, the Oregon Mayors Association has a couple of meetings a year, and at the last meeting that we were at, Mayor McCartell of Independence, Oregon, who is a former Olympian, asked all of the mayors to put together little one-minute videos of their communities cheering on our Olympians. So the Olympics and the Paralympic Games are starting in Paris later on this month, and what they're going to do is basically just do a running scroll of these little mini-videos coming from small communities and communities across the country. And Mayor McCartell asked everyone from Oregon to please put one together and send it in. And so at the Fourth of July festivities, we had a little group activity to get some fodder for our video. Councillor Dale was kind enough to film it and to piece it all together into our little one-minute video, which as of today is ready for prime time. So let's go ahead and show it. Oh, and let's get it going. Mayor Tanya Graham, coming to you from beautiful Ashland, Oregon. Thank you so much for the hard work you've put into getting to today and for representing our nation in the 2024 Olympic and Paralympic Games. We are so proud of each and every one of you, and we will be cheering you on from Ashland.
We love you, Team USA!
We love you, Team USA!
That's it! Give the young woman a prize! Fantastic! Come on up here. Can you pull up the rickety? Yes, you are now an honorary caller. Up here, you'll see.
We love you, Team USA!
Yes, so that was super fun. Thank you again, Councillor Dale. And we will get our video over to the folks who are organizing that and make sure that Ashland is well represented. All right, we now move on to approval of minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Okay, the floor is open for a motion to approve the minutes. Councillor Bloom?
Thank you. I move approval of the June 17th study session and June 18th business meeting minutes.
There's a second. Roll call, please, Alyssa. Hyatt?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
And now we are to special presentations. We welcome SO Ready.
Nice to see you. It has been a bit, so I'm glad to be here and provide an update on what your Regional Economic Development Agency is up to. So I do have a slide deck, and let me get it to the full screen. This is where I always get confused on how to use this. Okay. Well, you can see it okay. I think everybody else can see it, too. So.
From beginning.
From beginning? Thank you, ma'am. There we go. Okay, thank you. So Colleen Padilla, I'm the Executive Director for SO Ready, almost 23 years at the agency now, and it's always a dynamic day and week. And the last several years have been particularly dynamic. So thank you again for having me and for your leadership. I want to talk tonight about the value of a regional economic development agency. I'm not going to read this verbatim, but our mission really is to help advance businesses, help them launch, relocate, and prosper. That's also about recruiting companies to the region, but our heart of what we do is help our existing companies. And really, the big hairy audacious goal is to become the most business-friendly region on the West Coast, and we have a lot of work to do. Bit of history going way back to 1987 is when we were founded by the two large cities, Metford and Grants Pass, and the two counties. In 1989, there was also the creation of the Economic Development District later on. Those two merged, which makes SO Ready kind of an anomaly in the state of Oregon, where both the Economic Development District funded by some federal dollars and then also a private sector Economic Development Agency. In 2019, we updated our strategy, which you have seen before, and I have a report given to you on the last three years for 2020 through 2023. And finally, after a long disruption, we're kind of back to a full staff of six business professionals, and that feels really good. We actually serve all 15 jurisdictions in the two counties. You may be surprised to know that our budget is less than $860,000 a year, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that budget momentarily. We get all that stuff done with those six wildly serious about business staff members. That's our tagline. And quite honestly, just like you probably do, you have more expectations than you can reasonably address and have capacity to respond. So we learn to say no, and it's painful, but we're in our 38th year of doing business. Going back to that budget, most of that comes from our own reserves. A huge chunk of it comes from our own revolving loan fund, which we'll talk about in a minute. It's just having managed that really well, the interest reserves. We have a very small grant that comes from the federal government. All jurisdictions and private sector membership makes up well over 50% of our entire budget. And then we have other things like small contracts that may come through periodically, but our operational revenues are pretty small on a regular basis. This is the key priorities from last year, and I just really wanted to point out the SEDS initiatives. That SEDS is our One Rogue Valley strategy. We are required to create that strategy from the Economic Development Administration, which is the U.S. Department of Commerce. The primary initiatives in that are business development, it's tourism, innovation and entrepreneurship, talent, which is workforce development, and placemaking. What I'm really pleased to say is that the SO Ready Board of Directors at its last business meeting in May actually approved moving strategically about $300,000 from our own reserves to help us get back up to capacity and do the work that helps us give us some more leeway in doing the things that we need to do. So that's over a three-year period of time. Again, our charter is to expand existing facilities within Jackson and Josephine County. This is the current staff. You don't see my dog there. She comes to work with us also currently. But just today, we signed a new lease. We are located in Metford, but in about one month, we'll be relocating our offices to downtown Metford for a short period of time, as we're asking our Board of Directors to help us investigate a long-term solution, which could possibly mean we purchase something so that we don't have to move every five or six years. So we're reinvesting in the business community and beyond. Our biggest goal right now, because we had such a disruption, is to increase our business engagement. That is our purpose, is to identify needs and provide resources, refer to other agencies. We do provide grant administration services and a particular interest in this existing fiscal year. We have received a grant from Business Oregon for $225,000 to be the fiscal manager of an innovation hub. And so we have a 12-person committee on that already. I might tell you a little bit more about that momentarily. And then we also just received word that we are receiving through House Bill 3395, which goes back to the Oregon Legislature in 2023, $399,000, which is set aside specifically to help with workforce housing projects. And we believe we need to get started on a housing consortium right away to help us determine best use of those limited funds over the next three years. We always want to align with our charter and our comprehensive economic development strategy. We also manage the enterprise zones in both counties. There are four zones. We're going to build up our loan program again and then expand private sector membership base, and that's all because we now have enough staff to free me up in particular to do some of those things. Recruitment and expansion, this sometimes is what lands in the paper, and I want to explain to you that there's also often a false narrative that says we poach companies from one community to the other, and that is not true. We always expand to the business's inquiry. If they say they want to be in Grants Pass or in Metford, then we say, okay, what do you need? And they give us their list of size, things like that. Most of the projects we have, which we give code names, that is for their confidentiality. In some cases, we have a non-disclosure agreement, but in most cases, they're local companies that are choosing to expand and don't want their employees to be upset and think that they're losing their jobs or something else is amiss. And quite frankly, they don't want to be bothered by many, many salespeople and others until the time is right for them to choose their final destination. So Project Twinkie is one that I know you are very familiar with. This is the townmaker's development in the Coleman property. We have been engaged in that particular project since 2021. We've done quite a few things with them. They'll be back soon. I know we're waiting for that no further action. So we're just involved in that, and there's no charge from us. I want to make that clear that we don't charge businesses for any of our services. We do a complementary or liaison between the private and public sector so that they can get what they need to get done. So they'll be back here shortly. Project Murphy, you probably heard about that. It's a big Amazon facility, big to us, but a very small footprint for what they do throughout the nation. It's got its certificate of occupancy just this week in Central Point. This is one of those in which I had a non-disclosure agreement. We offered different incentives. In the end, they decided not to take those incentives, which would have been property tax abatement. Project Monarch was a project that recently, just last year, is now in, technically, it's in Metford. They want to say it's a Central Point location. It's really Metford. But this is Herb Farm, which is out in Williams, and they expanded into this region. They have over 220 employees in several different entities in the region. And the reason they expanded to Metford is because they now have product, they have something like 300 different SKUs. They now have product going to European markets, and this is about their 50th year of business. And I reference here on some places where you can read more about them in page eight on that report you have in front of you. Some other ones are Project Bundle, which is specific wall systems, which landed in Phoenix. That was actually a lead from your interim city manager several years ago, when they had inquired about the Coleman property, but knew that that was not an immediate pathway. So then he recommended they reach out to us. We explored other properties. In great circumstances, they were able to land in Phoenix when Boise Cascade vacated one of their properties. So that was a great win for a local company. And then Project Green is a company called Michael Riesel Applications. It's in White City. Its headquarters are in Grants Pass, and they expanded, they are expanding to White City to build a new plant for R&amp;D and some other things. Project Adventure, you may know about that. That's right here in Ashland or will be in Ashland. We've been talking to them for a bit now. Dehydrated Food Company from Alaska. They do have an enterprise zone authorization for some equipment they will bring into the former Marinatha plant, and then the developer and owner of the building is working on some other gap financing with SO Ready. Speaking of the gap financing, that has been since 1994, over $23 million lent to over 260 clients. Those monies came from the Economic Development Administration and USDA. If you go down to that final bullet point, we're very pleased to always say we no longer owe the federal government any money, and those dollars are basically unencumbered, but we call them restricted for loan use and special projects. So in Ashland specifically, we do have some current clients, including Scout, which used some pandemic funds that came through the EDA, Noble Fox, which is one of your newer restaurants, and Masket. And over time, there's 15 to 20 Ashland loan clients. You might recognize some of those names, Standing Stone, Caldera, E-Myth, Project A, and Malagros. Some of those are closed, some of those are still open. And then SO Ready Loan Program, again, we've fully revolved, and we do not have any debt to the federal government. The Southern Oregon Innovation Hub, this is really to get us all together as entrepreneurial service organizations. These are your SBDCs. It includes SOU, it includes coworking spaces and maker spaces, like what you see in Talent and Creator Works in Central Point. It's getting us all together to make sure the entrepreneur is front and center and has easy, warm handoffs to the next service so that they get what they need. And so we had a planning grant, and now we have an implementation grant, $225,000. Tomorrow, the steering, excuse me, the governance committee will be interviewing three candidates for what we call the steward position. And this whole effort in itself is very entrepreneurial, because the steward will be hired by SO Ready. We are the fiscal manager, but we will not direct that person. That person will work for the entire region and all the entrepreneurial service organizations. So you can read more about that if you wish. Going on, I mentioned that what we do best and what is at our heart is supporting existing companies and partners. During the pandemic and during the fires, we were able to pass through $7.1 million to 557 businesses. We can break that down further, but that's for the region, and it matters that it's for the whole region, because the workforce lives wherever they want to live. So it's important for us to see that. And we're also very encouraged that OSF, Shakespeare, received the $2.56 million grant from the legislature. We wrote a letter of support for that. It's very small here, but you can see it in your slide decks. That was just a thank you from the interim OSF director for writing the support letter. We write lots of support letters, which you can see in that, particularly when it's specifically outlined or addressed in our strategy. 27 of them were written in the last three years and another 12 already in this current fiscal year. A lot of uncommon interactions. We're very engaged with the Southern Oregon Association of Physicians and Partners, which is called SOAP. Healthcare is our region's top industry, so we're trying to do all that we can to assist them. We have a couple of loans on the books and forthcoming in that category. And this is a group of regional physicians and providers working together on messaging to attract professionals to our region. Other uncommon interactions that are actually more common now, we have had tours with SOU, OIT, and RCC, where we went to their campuses with workforce partners, small business development centers, so that we can make sure our universities and our colleges know what we do and how we engage and can help them with their different initiatives. We also partner, and we have been doing this for probably 15 years now, we do industry tours. We've had a few of them over here. But we partner with Rogue Workforce Partnership, which is the workforce board for our region, and also with the Southern Oregon ESD. And what's really cool about that now is we actually have stops at high schools to complement the businesses we just visited to see how those skills can be learned in high schools. So how can you partner in the region's economic vitality? Well, first, we would ask that you continue to support SO Ready as the region's Economic Development Agency. We always ask that we all appreciate the beauty and unique qualities of all of our communities, all the way up to Butte Falls, which is our watershed for much of our region. Recognize that we are One Rogue Valley and celebrate the small and large businesses in every community. Be curious about business and ask them what we can do to help them do better in our region or succeed. And ask the question, too, like, what do we need to change? You know, what do we have wrong? And then we always appreciate it when you refer businesses to SO Ready and/or your Chamber of Commerce for help in expanding, relocating, and finding the resources they need. That's it. I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Councillor Dale?
Thank you so much. This is just outstanding. I just love this. This is just.
Thank you, councillor.
Absolutely. So I'm sure there's plenty of existing and potential small, medium-sized business owners that are watching tonight or here tonight. We have several graduates of high schools and universities. If you could speak directly to those individuals that are just considering or starting, how would you direct them as far as taking first steps? How does that work as far as picking up the phone or sending that first email? What is step number one and step number two for those individuals?
For setting up a business?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Well, and engaging SO Ready in the services.
And engaging, pick up the phone or send us an email and just tell us your story. And be prepared to answer some difficult questions like, do you have a business plan? Do you have a mentor? Those types of things. What is your need? And really understand what your business proposition is before you call, but don't be afraid to call us. We're going to help you. And if you don't have a business plan of some sort, we're going to connect you to a small business development advisor or someone else. We happen to know a lot of people, and we know a lot of companies. So oftentimes, I'll make up an example of a company, if a student or a small business wants to start a little manufacturing firm, we'll figure out who's the manufacturer in our region that can mentor them along and help them map out some things. We have partners like Oregon Manufacturing Extension Partnership that does that exact thing, that helps mentor usually more mid-sized companies to the next step. So there's lots of resources. Don't be afraid to call. Let us know what you would like. Thank you.
Councillor Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for coming, Colleen.
You're welcome.
Really appreciate the refresh. I was one of those businesses that 15 years ago knocked on your door, and you pointed me to your next-door neighbor, the SBDC, and said, you need a business plan, Eric. Great idea. So thank you for your service in connecting all of these dots. My question for you really is, what does SO Ready do to help attract businesses to our region? What kind of outreach? Is it? Yeah, I'll just start with that.
Thank you. It's a good question. That was primarily my role before I became Executive Director, and we had more proactive strategies. We used to go to trade shows and look, specific trade shows like Outdoor Recreation and the Natural Products Show, some aviation shows, things like that that fit what we want. We're not going to go to anything that just doesn't fit who we are in Southern Oregon. It's got to match. That was more proactive. A few years ago, pre-pandemic, we had several different contracts, which we call lead generation contracts, where we hire someone, we give them the parameters of what we're looking for. We want six companies under 100 employees or 150 employees that are expanding, that are interested in our region and have a project in the next two to three years. And they would set up those calls. They would research that, get the calls for us, and then at that time, we would then go visit that company. We'd have a conference call, then we'd go visit the company and then invite them out when the time was right. That's a proactive strategy. For many years, we hosted what we call site consultant familiarization tours, where I would court site consultants. Those are the ones that are working with bigger projects and helping them land their next location, wherever that may be. There's not a lot of projects like that in a given year, but we do go to some site consultant forums. And then what we would do is we would invite them, we had sponsors for this, didn't come out of our operations, we would invite three to four site consultants and their spouses to our region for like two and a half days, 12-hour days of seeing everything, seeing properties, seeing businesses, going down the jet boats. We've been at Cabaret. We've done all kinds of different things to introduce them to our region, and it was, we paid for all of it, airfare, hotel, meals, everything. And so we're hopeful to get back to that now after the disruption. We just promoted, we just hired a new loan manager, and the previous loan manager is now working specifically on recruitment strategies, and we're working on pulling together a portfolio of all of our current properties that are ready or even close to ready, and some of the details, so that we have something to show them when they get here. So it's some of those things, but we have a lot of leads that just call us. Some of them come through Business Oregon, and some of them, we can't even respond to them. One of the current ones, which we are responding to, but you don't have anything here in Ashland, is actually a bicycle manufacturer that needs 65,000 square feet. So we respond to those leads also. So there's proactive, and then there's just reactive responding to the inquiries.
Well, thank you, and I'm glad to hear that you're getting back into the proactive scene. And, you know, just a little pitch for those that might be watching with their modest businesses that want to move to Ashland. We do have modest inventory here to start a new business, so I hope that this spurs some discussion at least. But thank you again for your efforts. But thank you again for your efforts.
Thank you, counselor.
Counselor Duquesne?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Colleen. So nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
So kind of to piggyback on Counselor Hanson, open inventory here in Ashland, something that I wanted to ask, having a piece of property, in the pandemic, some businesses closed. So there is a business here in Ashland that closed, and students put together a feasibility study there at the university and came up with what they thought this 17,000 square feet could look like. And it's something that I feel like, and apparently, they very, they strongly feel like this is needed. When you have the feasibility study, you have the building, does So Ready prospect go out and find funding or the opportunity to work public-private? Does So Ready get involved in finding someone who might want to invest in an opportunity?
Not right now so much. We, we would be happy to do that. It's a matter of staff capacity and return on the investment of our time, so we have to be careful about prioritizing. Are we referring to the property that was the former cinema?
Yes.
Okay. And I know that Terrell Roper, who's our business development manager, came out and looked at that.
Yes, he did.
We could do that. We, we're not necessarily familiar with all the investors. We used to be very engaged with our Southern Oregon, Southern Oregon Angel Investment Network, and maybe that will come back. It's just been dormant. And so, would like to do that, but I have to say that it's not a proactive initiative that we do right now.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Bloom?
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Great report and all the work you do. We appreciate it. We spoke a little bit about inventory, but I'm curious, what other concerns or challenges do business owners, businesses looking to relocate, speak to when talking about Ashland other than inventory?
I don't know that they specifically talk about Ashland. It's more of a regional, like, the projects that come in, the number one issue always for recruitment is workforce. Will they find the workforce they need for that particular business? And then also the land itself, I guess that would start first. Is there even a place to be? Many of the projects that we have come through asking for something are 25 to 50 acres. We don't have that anywhere in our region that's ready to go. So, ready-to-go property with the proper infrastructure, typically now, projects that are interested in our area, we're already on a shortlist, and their, their goal really is to eliminate you and get down to the final decision. But, you know, we don't have a, a large inventory of large enough lands for manufacturing, and existing facilities are great. We don't have a lot of those either, so we lack inventory. Sometimes the workforce just doesn't match up with what they need. Many of the leads that we actually receive from Business Oregon will say right off the, right off the bat, must be within 100 miles of a port or an international airport, and so we can't even respond to those. So those are some of the things, mostly. Of course, when you get further down, when you're getting lower on the list in terms of being selected, then they're going to ask about things like, what's the housing situation look like? What is childcare services? Education? What are all these other factors that fall a little bit more in placemaking, quality of life? They'll start to ask those things, and that, that's further down. Number one is, you know, what are the, what do you have available? What's the workforce look like? And how are you going to be able to help us get there? What incentives may be available? And I will finish this one thought, that Oregon is not an incentive-rich state. Our primary incentive, primary incentive is property tax abatement. If you are a traded sector company, it doesn't apply to retail. Could apply to a brewery, though. We have another brewery going up in our region, or headquarters, or something like that. And that's only on new capital investment. Whatever's on the tax roll already, like if they go into an existing facility, it's already being taxed. But if they brought in a bunch of equipment to do something pretty significant, that could potentially receive property tax abatement. Other than that, we don't write checks. I don't have a checkbook for it. Sorry.
Of course. No, I, I appreciate that, and, and, you know, it's illuminating, and we certainly have our work cut out for us, but, you know, understanding that will help all of us make better decisions on going forward and what we need to do to attract more businesses, obviously regionally, but, but Ashland as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Catherine?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I had the same question that Counselor Bloom had, so you've answered that in quite a bit of detail. I guess the, the additional wrinkle that I would ask you to, to add to that is, do, do folks talk about what they would expect from local government, from locals, local jurisdictions in order to be a more business-friendly environment?
What the businesses expect? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Stream, always, because I mentioned, I've been with So Ready for almost 23 years. It's always streamlined processes and, or, or at least certainty around processes in the planning and building level, right? So Oregon, you are, you all will know, this is the most difficult state in the Union for land use planning. And so, companies that are coming from elsewhere in the state often are just surprised that they just can't do what they want to do. It's not that that's going to change for us, that's just a fact. But streamline services. I've, I've heard before from businesses that would love it when elected officials that are in office take time to get to know who's in their community and reach out to them once they're here. Yeah. Because really, the heart of our region are the existing companies already. So if I could encourage you in something today, I mentioned being curious about business. When you have time, you're in the elevator or you're just walking down the street, ask them how their business is doing. Just ask them. Be curious. I think that's what they want to know, is that they're valued and that elected officials and others see the impact that they have in our community. Without a vibrant business community, we don't have the government services. We don't have the taxable base to provide the government services.
Counselor Hyatt?
Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen, for being here tonight. I do have the privilege of being the, this council's liaison to the So Ready Board, and I have to say, it is a learning experience every time. There are many businesses and industries in our community that we don't always see and know, like Rogue Truck Body, for instance, who I have learned a lot about over the last few years. With that in mind, that's a, that's a success story on expansion. So an existing business that expanded within the region, and one thing I love about that company is their, how they articulate, "We employ 74 families." That's how they say it. Because they know that the, the folks that are working there represent not just one person, but more than one. And I think that's a beautiful thing. So all that is a lead-up to my question about how do we help support those businesses currently here that may want to explore expanding? And what can we do as a community to aid in that?
Well, I think your chamber does a great job, along with So Ready, is getting out there and visiting them on a regular basis. This is why we needed to get back up to staff so we could uncover, we could uncover additional needs. I just looked at our dashboard recently, that we made some close to 200 connections with businesses over the last four months, and that's really just three people doing that. And so, getting out and going back to that curiosity, like being curious, finding out, letting them know that there are all kinds of niche services available. It's not just So Ready, it's not just the chamber, there are S B D Cs. We all work and have a different niche in the puzzle. We work together to do that. So encouraging them, knowing that we have these services, knowing about all the partners that are here, just giving them information and encouraging them to contact us. That would be the, the best measure, I think, because we really want to help. Our, our best return on the investment of your membership in So Ready and our time is to help the existing companies add one or two jobs at a time versus trying to recruit the next shiny gem.
Thank you, and thank you for coming out tonight.
Yeah. You're welcome.
Thank you, Colleen. It's great to see you.
You're welcome. Great to see you.
I have a question. You mentioned in your presentation that talent is the key, right? Being able to actually have people who can work for these companies. And what we hear often in our deliberations is that there are various obstacles that come from that. So we think about, we know we need to build affordable housing. We know the state of Oregon is 140,000 units behind. We also know that we don't have enough plumbers, electricians, construction workers, contractors, the whole deal. From a climate resilience standpoint, we also know that we don't have enough people who are trained in how to help a community become fire-adapted. So how do we deal with our buildings and our landscapes? We don't have enough people who actually do that, to, to be able to move through that space. And then when we have the conversation about childcare, which has been a big conversation here, we have that same, it comes back to, we don't have enough workers. And part of that is that we don't have enough housing for those workers, and it's this very sort of vicious cycle. And so, I'm very interested in what you were talking about in terms of partnering with the, the schools, both the high schools and our local higher education facilities. Because one of the things I don't see us doing as a culture is standing in front of our children and saying, this is what is actually needed. And here are the pathways that can get you to that, that very strong trade or that profession. We see a lot of sort of churning with our young people, not, not getting the guidance that says you're needed in these different places if you have an aptitude for these different types of work. Is there anything that can be done between these elements, between local municipalities, our economic development efforts, and these training programs? Because we see it at the city as well. You know, certain types of positions, young people don't know that, you know, that there are municipal positions necessarily, that are, that more and more communities are having trouble filling. So what, what might be able to be done at the nexus between those three areas?
Well, I think that's the gist of why we started industry tours years ago, and then in the last four or five years, they have educators on the bus. It's not our members so much anymore, they're educators that are sponsored to be out visiting the companies, know that they exist, and what the skill sets are to take back to the schools, that's part of it. And now adding the high school, that's part of it. But it's not just that one thing. We also collaborate with R C C and S O U on the tours, which I mentioned. And also, James and others that are on my staff, they go out all the time and introduce businesses to those schools or bring the, the university, President Bailey or President Weber, to those businesses to understand what's going on so they can figure out what their needs are. So I think there's more collaboration around that now, but it's not something that we can crack necessarily, but we're, we're trying to get the word out.
Is there a way to potentially bring together these various different needs in a way that local principals could share with their graduating seniors and their juniors, that universities could share as a, sort of as a collective? I appreciate the good work of, of these tours and things, but I think if you're not on that tour, you're not going to necessarily get the benefit of that, that connection. So is there a way for all of our municipalities to, to tell So Ready, what, what do we need? And for local industries to tell you what they need and to somehow pull that in together into a, into sort of a single body of, of work that could be shared with these, these young people who are coming out of these various educational programs?
I would like to say, yes, there's a way. I don't know the pathway yet, but I will talk to the E S D about that, since they're ingrained in the schools, and figure out how could we do a larger study of some sort and create a pathway to do that. That's a, it's a little bit out of our purview because we work mostly on the, the business itself side, but the educational programs and getting back into schools might be perfect for them in a partnership with us. So I don't know the exact pathway. I wish I did.
Great, thank you. Counselor Hyatt?
If I could just follow up behind Colleen on that. We do have Dr. Bailey and Dr. Weber, who are also on the So Ready Board, and they are often listening to the local businesses and their needs. And I know recently, it was the nursing program, I believe, Colleen, that came up in conversation in response to a lot of the, the feedback. So I know R C C and S O U are working in tandem on workforce and programs that are accessible. So the pathway may be through the education special district in, in conjunction with our university presidents in a way, and, as a way to integrate them into school district conversation.
And I wonder, maybe they're the ones to lead the, the integration of that information, to, you know, the call-out for it and to pull it together.
They may be, but it is, it's economic development, and I know the, the city has a role there, too. So it, it may just be another, an, an opportunity for a roundtable like we have had in the past, only this time with a focus on talent pool, education, and our, our graduating classes.
I will add to that if I may, Mayor. We have a, we have an initiative going right now with President Bailey and kind of a C E O roundtable for that very purpose, to understand their needs around education. So maybe from those businesses will come some suggestions on next steps. That's specifically for S O U, but, thank you.
Great. Any final requests or questions? Great, thank you so much, Colleen.
Thank you very much.
We now move on to the city manager report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A few things. We continue to work on our city website. We're currently in the process of moving our archived city records to Laserfish. You can get to Laserfish through our website. The easiest way is to go to the City Recorders page and look for archived city records. We have had almost 35,000 visitors to our site, so, great. Seems to be working well. Our July 20, 24 city newsletter is up on our website, and as a sign of the times, we are currently in stages of developing a cyber threat annex to our emergency management plan. As a note to the conversation earlier, our next coffee and conversation will be September 25th, 3:00 to 4:30 p.m. at Railroad Park. Council members Bloom and Hanson and myself will be present, and I'm sure we'll have some other guests there as well. You all may have noticed a new decorative crosswalk downtown near City Hall at the entrance of Lithia Park. It is called Walking Upstream, and it's quite beautiful. If you haven't seen it, I would encourage you to come check it out. We have received the G F O A budget award for our 23, 25 biennial budget. I think this is the 25th year we've received it or so, so that's exciting. And our human resources department keeps us on track with our D E I training. We have makeup anti-harassment training for staff towards the end of August, and we will be rolling out some supervisor training in August as well. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. We are now to public forum. We have 10 folks who have signed up for this evening, so each person will have two minutes. I'll call your name, and you'll come up to one of these two microphones. Alyssa will help us keep time. When you have 10 seconds left, or 20 seconds left, excuse me, she'll give you a single chime, and when your time is up, she'll give you a double chime. And that will let you know that, that your time is up and we need you to finish that sentence, and then, and then the next person can come up and have their appropriate amount of time. So please, when you come up, state your name and the city in which you live. The first person up will be Clarinda Meripen, and then David McAllister, followed by Lily Milan, and Nora Doyle. And, and two people can come up at once, that's fine. Go ahead.
Hey, Clarinda Meripen, owner of The Black Sheep Downtown. I want to talk about the state of the restaurant industry and make two specific requests of you guys as a whole. In general, the restaurant industry is down about 20% downtown, and this is from talking to individual owners all the way around. Not talking about, I know that there's a lot of anecdotal data out there, oh, when I go downtown, it's really great. Well, 4th of July is really great. Come on a Monday, come on a Tuesday, come on a Friday night at 11 o'clock, and it's much deader than it's been in the past. We're down around 2016 levels, but our expenses, which include inflation, anything related to labor, and anything to do with financial institutions, credit cards, bank charges, insurance, and a new thing, P O S fees, are bringing us up around a new high. So our margins are almost nothing. You'll see this in evidence by so many restaurants being sold and bought right now. So that's one evidence, and as a whole. You know, I know that you guys are aware of this, but there's population changes. Ashland population declined about 459 since 2002, according to your websites, since 2020, sorry. But I would say that it's probably triple that, and a lot of it is between kids, between the ages, I say kids because I'm that age, 20 and 45. And a lot of those are the creatives, and they're not only moving here, but they're moving to Portland, but they're moving to talent in Phoenix. That doesn't only pull out our, our restaurant pool, it pulls, our talent pool, it also pulls out people coming out to eat. S O U fell about 700 since last year, or down since, sorry, 200. SOU fell about 700 since last year, or down since, sorry, 2019, and that's a huge amount. Okay. OSF tourists, people aren't staying as long, and they're getting squeezed by older monies. And we're not pulling from surrounding towns. Specifics, one, there is a war on A-frames downtown, and it's a huge issue for us and for retailers. I need to get this out, so let me just go through this because these are the requests. One, can you create a permitting system, please, that we can do the same as you do tables downtown? There's no cost, and there's this war from staff on A-frames. It makes us a lot less nimble, and there's a lot of these sign issues that are not being pulled. And two, the food and beverage tax, I really would have this as a very serious request. Can you double the administrative fee, hook it to something with inflations because it's not covering the cost of administrating it? And can you create more transparency? Because I know you guys see that it's increasing, but we don't know if it's coming from supermarkets or restaurants. So if you want to keep any restaurants, you got to figure that out. Sorry, trying to get through it all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor and council members, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, but stay in nice and close to that microphone.
What?
Just do want to stay in close to that microphone so we can hear you.
Good evening. I'm David McAllister, resident of Ashland, and I'm with Southern Oregon Climate Action Now, SoCan. I would like to encourage progress on Ashland's clean air ordinance. I consider it to be very important. Also, I personally would like to see Ashland in the forefront of green-oriented cities. The world is heating up fast, and this will probably lead to millions of climate refugees from heat and rising sea levels. In fact, it's happening now. We in Ashland should do our part in trying to ameliorate climate change and, in turn, its disruptive effects. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lily Milan, Nora Doyle, and following them will be Candace Williams and Jackson Bangs.
Hello, my name is Lily Malin. I think I had a chance to meet some of you at the Coffee and Conversation the other day.
Lily, can you get in a little closer?
A little closer.
Yeah.
I am a preschool teacher at Roots &amp; Wings Behavioral Center in Medford, and I'm an Ashland resident. I'm here with SoCan in support of the Climate Action Team, the Rogue Climate Action Team, and the use for electrification. I've been an Oregon resident my entire life by way of Grants Pass, and I used to compare my, growing up in the Rogue Valley to living in the Shire. And because of my love for the environment and the natural world, I've been screaming to the ceiling, to anyone that would listen, about climate change since I was their age. And I will be 31 next August. And in that time, I've watched wildfires become a season. I've watched water become unswimable and undrinkable, air become unbreathable, and forests be clearcut from their ever-eroding soil. And now that, when I was their age, I was just begging the adults around me to take me seriously and to take my cause seriously. And now that I am one of the adults, there is a new generation of young people who are pleading with us to take their cause seriously. And I would ask the council to not repeat the prideful mistakes of our previous generations and heed the words and the work of these young people. Thank you.
Thank you. Everyone, just so everybody knows, there could be no noise coming from the audience. We do allow, if you agree with something that someone says, you're able to do this, and this signals to the council that you have that support, but we have to have no sound coming from the audience. Also, would like to just mention that there is no appropriate hand signal if you disagree. All right. Nora, and will be followed by Candace Williams and Jackson Bangs.
Hi, my name is Nora Doyle. I am a junior at South Medford High School, and I am here because, as a teenager who was born and raised in the Rogue Valley, the time I spend indoors during summer only increases more and more each year, whether that be due to unhealthy wildfire smoke or uncomfortable heat waves. As someone who deeply values their time outdoors, I really feel slighted because I was always taught as a kid that it's our responsibility to take care of the planet we live on, but I grew up to not really see a lot of adults leading by example. The climate and clean air policy package is a necessary step to not only promote indoor and outdoor air quality, but as a chance for the city of Ashland to lead by example. Actions like passing this ordinance speak far louder than the words that promised climate action when the Climate and Energy Action Plan was passed seven years ago, but have since delivered lackluster results. I urge you to ensure that city staff have drafted policy language for the climate and clean air policy package by the August 5th study session, including a low NOx emission standard for appliances and new homes, a pollution fee for connecting new homes to gas hookups that fund low-income, energy-efficient upgrades, and a resolution to address emissions in existing homes and commercial and industrial construction. As I and the other youth in this room fight for the future of our community, I hope you can join us in the efforts. We'd be happy to have you. Thank you.
Thank you. Candace Williams and Jackson Bangs, followed by Laura Lawrence and Danny Espinoza?
Hello, my name is Jackson Bangs. I'm a resident of Medford, Oregon, but like everyone in this room, I experience the side effects of climate change here in the Rogue Valley because it affects everybody that lives here and breathes the Rogue Valley air. And also, it's good for business to make sure that we keep the Rogue Valley clean and inhabitable if you want a good, healthy workforce. And also, it's a growing industry to invest in renewable energy like wind and solar and electric vehicles. So it is on behalf of firefighters, future and present capitalists, and the residents here in this room that we pass a low NOx or emission-free standard so that we can, again, keep the Rogue Valley inhabitable for current and future generations. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor Graham. Oh, Candace Williams, and to my friends, trouble.
Mayor Graham and members of the city council. My name is Candace Williams. I am here to support the youth and their hard work that has led them to this climate and clean air policy package, a goal they have worked, reached in a year. I believe the council unanimously voted to direct the staff to draft an indoor emission standard and a carbon fee at the May 21st council meeting. Has this been accomplished, and if not, why? What we want is clean air and a bold climate action. When do we want it? Yesterday, but now will do. We must do this for our children, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren, and for the future of those yet to come. It's not too late. For all of our futures, pass the climate and clean air package. Support the effort of the young people that have worked so hard. Thank you for your time on this matter. And last, I am extremely disappointed in the council's decision to hire Rocky Houston when you had a person with the skills and knowledge that had put in many hours and jumped through many hoops to right the many wrongs that Mr. Black had caused. Shame on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Lawrence and Danny Espinoza, followed by Susan Sullivan and Amanda Morehouse.
Hello, I'm Laura Lawrence. I'm a resident of Ashland, and I am just here to speak to somebody, as somebody who has electrified her home and am so very happy. 10 years ago, I designed and built a house that I did not want to have any bit of gas in it, near it, or around it. And I have not, I have never been so pleased and happy with the results. It is economical, it is safe, and clean and healthy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Danny Espinoza. I was born in Ashland, and I live in Medford, Oregon, and I would like to be, have this be pushed, that electrifying new homes that are coming in is not only sustainable, but is also economical. As has been mentioned before, new houses need to be put in, as Ashland should be the first wave of something new and something that is for the climate. Not only do we know that nitrous oxide is dangerous, but it is a leading cause of childhood asthma. It is an accelerant in many fires and homes exploding. So we know it's dangerous, we know it's not good for us, but yet it is still being put into new homes today that are supposed to be not only affordable, but are supposed to be for those in our future. So I want us to take back our future and make the environment a non-political issue. It is not for one political party, but it's for all of us.
Thank you. Susan Sullivan and Amanda Morehouse.
Thank you so much for seeing us, and I appreciate, once again, this group of young people are being greeted with courtesy and hope. The last time I was here, it was last month, in the month of June, and I observed great pieces of information coming across, and it was a real time of understanding for me and education. What I want to do today is to simply say that I'm still here with these young people. They are still working their little fingers off, and I want us to step forward and do what needs to be done for them. They are asking to pass the policy package in Ashland, the Clean Air and Climate and Policy Act, and that's what I'm here to reinforce. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, everyone. It's been a while. Still have a shaky voice. Since the last time I saw you, The Medical Journal, The Lancet. My name's Amanda Morehouse. I live in Central Point. I work here in Ashland and spend far too much money at mix, et cetera. I'm not proud of that at this moment. Medical Journal, The Lancet, has found that the death toll in Gaza is likely closer to 186,000, not whatever 30,000 is out there. Since the last time I saw you guys, my eyeballs saw what it looks like, what a toddler looks like without a head because it was blown off by a bomb, that my tax dollars have been paying for, and everyone in this room's tax dollars. I also saw the blurry image of a nine, a young girl without a jaw, like this whole thing, gone. And last night, I was FaceTiming with my son, who's also nine, and he would, like, he had his face on the couch like this, and he's like, no, wouldn't that look funny if I didn't have a mouth? And the image that went in my face was this child in Gaza who had her jaw blown off, still alive, getting treated without anesthetics, or whatever the word is, anesthesia. It's still happening. It's been 10 months, it's been longer than 10 months. People tell me, or I know I could be told to look away, but I can't look away. Looking away doesn't mean it's not happening. It is happening. It's still happening. If I have to know, you guys have to know.
We are now to the consent agenda. Would any counselor like to remove the single item that is on it? Okay, the floor is open for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. And Counselor Dale, seconds. Roll call, please, Alyssa. Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Thank you. We are now at the public hearing section. We have two public hearings this evening. The first is Resolution 2024-20, updating the Buildable Lands Inventory.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brandon Goldman, Community Development Director. To my right is Aaron Anderson, Senior Planner for City of Ashland. Aaron is also the principal author of the Buildable Lands Inventory document, which this council reviewed at a study session on June 3rd. The Planning Commission reviewed the document on May 14th and has forwarded a recommendation for the city council to approve Resolution 2024-20, to adopt that document as a technical supporting document to the urbanization element of our comprehensive plan. So Aaron is going to go into some detail about the Buildable Lands Inventory to provide an orientation as to what it contains and how it's utilized. I would note that we're fortunate that Aaron Anderson had the geographic information skills to allow us to do this in-house. So thank you to Aaron for putting together not just the report that you see as a narrative, but the backend geographic information that provides an assessment of every property in Ashland in terms of its development potential. And so with that, turn it over to Aaron.
Thank you for the introduction. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Brandon said, my name is Aaron Anderson, and I'm a Senior Planner in the Community Development Department. You received an in-depth presentation at a study session on June 3rd. This is going to be a much more high-level review, but for the benefit of people at home who haven't, didn't see that study session, a buildable lands inventory is meant to quantify the amount of vacant and partially vacant land that is available for development within the city. The last update of the BLI was done in 2019. In terms of the timeline, the work was, began in January and February with merging building permit data from the last BLI update to present, to the present GIS parcel data, and then document preparation and demographic work took quite a bit of time. The date here for the Planning Commission meeting was incorrect, it's actually May 14th, but they did forward a recommendation of approval to the council. And again, June 3rd, you received an extensive presentation, and here we're here for a brief review and an update via resolution. This is the map for the Buildable Lands Inventory, but as Brandon mentioned, you know, majority of the work finds its way into tabular data. To that end, the high-level findings are that within the city limits, there's 280, we found that there are 288 net buildable acres across all zones. The UGB contains another 340 net buildable acres across a gross area of 516. In terms of consumption over the last 13 years, the city has consumed about 10.2 acres per year. Now, the reason we refer to net buildable areas is that we've taken out lands that are not going to be able to develop due to flood plains or other reasons that they've been committed and are considered undevelopable. This slide is a summary of Tables 2, 3, and 4 from the report, and basically have the data that I just reported on that previous slide, including the gross acres and all the rest. In terms of development potential, we then take a look at that, the amount of land that is vacant and partially vacant, and looking at the density of the zone, determine how many dwellings potentially could be accommodated. And so we found that within the city limits, there's a capacity for over 1,400 dwellings, and within the UGB, there's the ability to support at least another 1,300 more for a total of 2,710. In terms of production, over the last six fiscal years, the city's produced 90 dwellings per year. This is Figure 1 from the BLI report. That is a graphical representation of the key findings that I just gave to you in terms of estimated development capacity by comprehensive plan designation. Again, just real briefly, the project started out mainly as geospatial, and then is joined up with building permit data, and then reviewed for accuracy. And then ultimately, that data is then output as a tabular data into spreadsheets, and you, we use pivot tables to summarize all of the data sets that are found in the report. The ultimate conclusions, again, the housing capacity analysis was recently conducted. was recently conducted, found the city had a demand for 858 dwellings over the next 28 planning, probably 20-year planning period. And again, the potential capacity for dwellings within the city and UGB exceeds that amount, showing that there's sufficient buildable lands. And then finally, Resolution 24-20, which is before you this evening, would amend the comprehensive plan and add this document as a technical supporting document to the comprehensive plan. The BLI does not establish any policy, but it does provide a technical basis for future decisions. And with that, I can take any questions that you might have.
Councillor Dale.
Thank you, Mayor. Aaron, outstanding work as always. Thank you to you and the team for such a heavy lift and putting this all in a digestible format. This is the cornerstone of where we start. So thank you, thank you and the team. Brandon, thank you so much. A quick question relative to the data you showed up there. And this is a question for last night, too, where we had a pretty deep dive into the climate-friendly equitable communities and the climate-friendly areas. Does this data reflect what we chatted about last night relative to the numbers and expected density and so forth?
So this data is based on the existing conditions and the zoning that's in place when it was drafted or in place today. Any future zoning modification that increases development potential in climate-friendly areas would be reflected in a subsequent buildable lands inventory. So short answer is no.
No problem. Thank you.
Councillor Kaplan?
No.
Oh. Councillor Duquesne?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for your work. Yesterday was a good study session. I appreciate that. And just looking at this, so in reading this, I saw the last time this was put together in 2019. And I also read and even had a bit of a discussion about the 100-year flood zone. Can you tell me about that?
Sure. So the 100-year flood zone is also known as the Special Flood Hazard Area. And our land use ordinance is very, very restrictive in terms of development in the flood plain. In short, if you have a property and you want to develop it, we require you to do it outside of the flood plain. And if there's a property, there's some that come to mind that is entirely encumbered by the flood hazard area, then the development would be forced, would be required to be located in the area of the shallowest flooding and also meet all of our standards with regards to freeboard, which is elevation above the base flood elevation. And so with regard to the counts of dwellings that are expected in this analysis, those areas of flood hazard, just like steep slopes, were excluded from the net buildable area. So when we're talking about net buildable area, we're talking about lands that are not encumbered by steep slopes or flood hazard.
Flood hazard.
If I could elaborate on that just a little bit. If a hypothetical one-acre property, half of it was within the flood plain, we would say that 50% of that lot was not developable. However, the remaining 50% can transfer the residential density off of the flood plain area onto the developable portion. There are circumstances where that can't really accommodate that many units. So it could result in a decrease in development potential. In which case, part of the backend of the Buildable Lands Inventory database is not just that there's half an acre available, but that half an acre can accommodate X number of units. So we adjust the adjusted dwelling units in order to accommodate things like transfer of density or existing buildings on the site that might constrain development.
Thank you, Brandon, for the clarity. And I just, a really quick follow-up, if I may. I was looking at the 288 acres that's buildable. And looking at the map, is, can you tell me if that 280, how much of that is on the south side of town? Because the map looked pretty, because I saw vacant, I believe Brandon was the purple, not the dark purple.
Yeah, so vacant is in this color right here. Pardon me, let me point around. Yeah, it's the purple.
Yeah, at the top.
And then partially vacant is this more pastel blue.
When we look at the 288, when I look at this, because looking at the vacant, not the partial, would that be located in the south side of town where we have more opportunity for building?
Largely, if you look at lands that are outside our city limits but within our urban growth boundary, you have the normal neighborhood, which is in that western half of the city, eastern half of the city, next to East Main. You have the Cromer Mill site, which is actually in the city limits, but is undeveloped. And those are probably the largest contiguous areas for development. You do see over on the far east of the city, off of Ashland Mine Road, development potential, but it is relatively difficult to access at this point. And so it has a lower density for residential development as well. So to your question, aside from infill throughout the city of a unit here or there on vacant lots, the larger development pattern would occur mostly on the south side.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson.
Thanks, Aaron. I appreciate you breaking it down for us again. Two questions. When you write that the city consumes 10 acres a year, just to clarify, you mean building not just the city of Ashland? We don't, the city of Ashland isn't consuming 10 acres?
Correct, through development.
Yeah, we as a community are, yeah. And then an interesting comment from the mayor last night was speculating that perhaps the backcasting for this number of 852 dwellings might not actually be accurate. Time will tell. We'll see what happens. But I'm curious, bringing that up, so many things that we think we take for granted, in the forecasts of other things turn out to be wrong. Like, you know, COVID and other things have taught us to question a lot. So what, like, using curiosity as our guide, what are we doing to kind of run different scenarios to backcast if indeed this number is way off? And really, we need like, you know, 1,500 dwellings over the next 15? I'm just curious if we're also running scenarios to, like, what if we really have a population boom here? How are we going to deal with it?
I'm sure Brandon has some thoughts on this, but I would just add one remark is that the housing capacity analysis determining the 858 new homes that we need in the 20-year planning period is to accommodate the expected population growth. It doesn't take into account existing deficit. So that's, those 858 homes are the homes that are needed for the expected population gain over that time. I mean, as far as your remark about backcasting, I'm not sure how to.
Yeah, so essentially, what we're talking about is Ashland expects to grow at roughly 1% or less per year. But if we do have success in terms of housing development that is increasing at a greater rate than that, then Portland State University will change their population projections. And that 858 number of future households that need to be accommodated within Ashland will no longer be accurate. So the Buildable Lands Inventory is an assessment of what land is on the ground and how many units can be accommodated. So the BLI won't change. But whether it goes from a 28-year horizon to a 20 or a 10, if population increases start to happen quicker, would be evident when the new population forecasting comes out, at which point then applicants would be able to look at urban growth boundary expansions or changes to the city limits in order to accommodate future growth or changes in density through upzoning, things like the climate-friendly areas. So I think we're always looking at how to accommodate population within our existing urban growth boundary through zone changes, anticipating that that just moves that timeframe of capacity. So even though this, the housing production strategy and BLI indicate that we have over a 20-year supply of land, if we're able to modify existing zoning to accommodate more units, that extends that time period or offsets inaccuracies in backcasting if population grows faster.
So there's really not much planning we can do to prepare ourselves for, because there's all, my dad used to say, God's not making any more land. So given that we have a finite amount of acres and opportunity, if we see a huge population increase, it'll just happen in a shorter amount of time. And there's really not much planning we can do.
Yeah, the state of Oregon requires that for planning purposes, we utilize Portland State University's population projections. So we'd not be able to make a defensible argument that we want to plan for a greater population growth than the state allows under that PSU designation.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Kaplan?
Yeah. Thanks, Aaron. Thanks, Brandon. We had a long discussion of this a bit over a month ago. And I got a lot of questions answered and I appreciate all of that. Part of my, part of what maybe contented me out of that conversation, because I do believe that the 858 forecast is probably low. Part of what contented me with this Buildable Lands Inventory is the knowledge that we are committed to much greater density in our climate-friendly areas, as we discussed last night. So I do want to bring the two pieces of information together. I mean, this Buildable Lands Inventory that we're, that we'll approve, it's a technical document for our comprehensive plan. But in terms of practical effect, in the next year or 10 years, once we get through the climate-friendly areas work and increase that density, we're going to, we're going to have multiples of housing opportunities, land for housing opportunities with greater density. Am I off-base with that? Or am I reading the whole situation correctly?
I would simply say, if you recall from the June 3rd study session, you know, one of the things we highlighted in that presentation was the differences between the 2019 and the present BLI and the estimates that we had versus the development that actually built out. And so I think, yes, you will ultimately see the same thing and perhaps even in greater scale because of the climate-friendly legislation. Also, that the document is really a, as we discussed in detail, doesn't take into account all of the ARU and duplex opportunities that exist because of guidance from the state on how to prepare a BLI. So at best, it's a low-end estimate of what could be developed if, throughout all of the inventory of land available.
Great. Okay, thanks. I'm still happy.
Any further questions for staff at this point? Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Alyssa, has anyone signed up to speak?
I'll sign.
Sir?
I'll just say my name right now.
Sir, sir, if you, sir, if you would like to speak, you need to come and fill up out of form. And you need to get it to us quickly because the public forum is already open.
No problem.
The form is up there on the left-hand side, or Alyssa may have one for you.
May I borrow a pen, please?
And has anyone else signed up to speak, Alyssa?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Sign up now.
Okay. Sir, you'll have three minutes. And she'll give you a single chime when you have 20 seconds left. Yes, right at one of those. Either one is fine. If you could take a seat.
Jeff, do you work for a joint?
Sir, sir, can you please sit down?
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Who works for a joint here? Jeff, do you work for a joint?
Sir, no one can answer your question here. This is a public forum space, so you can speak. We'll receive your comments.
You, influenced by a joint? Absolutely, you can tell. Listen, here's the deal with the south end of Ashland. I was born and raised here, okay? I know about the mill, the Coleman Mill. I understand, my family owns property here at the south end. I grew up, I went to Bellevue School. I went to junior high here, high school. Went to college here. And what a lot of people aren't recognizing here tonight is that back in the day, in the 60s and the 70s, is that a lot of people showed up like they are here tonight. It's very rare. But back in the day, every Tuesday night, people showed up. This place was packed and sweaty because everybody cared. And right now, God has sent me here, okay? God has sent me here to make sure that somebody stands up for the south end. Because your greed amongst you all is making it so that our traffic is going to be jacked for the next 20 years. Jacked. We all know it's already jacked at the south end. It was two lanes. We changed it for the betterment of the environment. So people ride bicycles and walk. Well, we all know who's walking. Those people have nothing. They're not influencing anything, okay? In reality, what really needs to happen, and the state will not let it happen, is that we need to open up the exit on the south end so trucks can get on the freeway if they need to. Suppose all these warehouses, they're going to open up and make a ton of money on the south end and not even get stopped anymore down there in Hornbrook is pay for that on and off ramp so that they have to go up the 5 to go to California and get off, coming down from California into Oregon on the south end exit that's only egress to the south, egress to the north, no opposite way. So truck drivers cannot loop around and come back and go down Croson or distribute their giant trucks off of the main intersection here and distribute traffic. Everyone here who's worth a penny knows that none of these trucks are going to be able to go on to Croson. So people need to keep in mind what's going to happen alone, just with traffic. Everything else, think about it tonight when you go home, everything else that follows after that.
Sir, I don't think we got your name.
My name is Thomas Kennedy.
Thank you.
And I'm a liberal and I'm a progressive and I'm proud.
Thank you for your question.
And I like money, but I also like open space.
Thank you, sir. If we have no other comments, we will close the public hearing and the floor is open for a motion. Councillor Dale.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 2024-20, Updating the city's Buildable Lands Inventory as a technical support document of the comprehensive plan.
Second.
Councillor Dale?
Nope, thank you very much.
Councillor Blum? Are there any other comments? Roll call, please, Alyssa? Dale?
Yes.
Blum?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Great, thank you. We move on now to second reading of ORD 3240, An Ordinance for Right-of-Way Vacation for a Portion of Fern Street.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I've been filling in for Public Works Director Scott Flurry tonight. Before you, you have a request to approve an ordinance for the vacation of a portion of the public right-of-way. The right-of-way in question is a portion of Fern Street near South Mountain Avenue. This is an unimproved, non-maintained right-of-way that basically provides for driveway access to adjacent lots on Fern Street. Scott has assured me, has conferred with all the neighbors, and everything is copacetic. So staff's recommendation is that this is approved tonight.
Are there any questions for staff? I know we've had quite a few, quite a bit of discussion about this already. I will open the public hearing. Alyssa, has anyone signed up to speak about this issue?
No.
I will close the public hearing and the floor is open. Oh, we do have one.
Oh, I apologize. Yes, Arthur.
Okay, great. Sir, if you would please come up?
I'll be brief. My name is Art Baden. I live on Fern Street in a property that abuts, vacated property. I had requested that the second reading be delayed, not because I was against the vacation, but because I didn't understand it. Subsequently, I've had numerous conversations with both Scott Flurry and Veronica Allen. And I just want to say, they did a wonderful job explaining this to me. I support this. And I want to commend the staff for being so helpful to a citizen in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there are no other comments, Doug?
I note that on the resolution itself, it says, this ordinance relating to the vacation of a portion of Otis should be changed to Fern. Sorry, that was a spelling error.
Okay. So council understands that that will be changed in the final. And there are no additional folks who have signed up? So the public hearing section of this is closed. The floor is open for a motion. Councillor Hanson?
Thanks, Mayor. I move to approve the second reading of Ordinance Number 3240, An Ordinance Relating to the Vacation Property Portion of Fern Street with the noted changes.
Is there a second? Councillor Duquesne? Did you second?
Yes.
Okay. Councillor Hanson?
Well, I appreciate you coming tonight because I know that this was a bit of a bumpy road to get here. And it all seemed at first reading as though we were smooth sailing. And I think now that we've ironed out these wrinkles and And I think now that we've ironed out these wrinkles and the community's on board, I'm really happy to approve this. And again, I just want to thank staff for communicating really well and doing all the due diligence here and working with the neighborhood.
Counselor Duquesne?
No, I would, I would like to give my appreciation to our residents who came to come in front of council this evening. Thank you.
Any additional thoughts or comments? Roll call, please, Alyssa? Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Thank you. We are going to take a short break, and when we come back, we will start with the recommendation from Sir Jack, go on to the committee work plan update, and then finish up with the city manager and city attorney's search updates. Counselors, please be back to your seats by 7:40. Thank you.
Mention that we have two budget supplementals that are part of our packet. They are expected to be relatively quick items, and so given that staff is here to address those, we'd like to move on those two items first. So if we can all move to that element of our of our agenda. The first, so I'll hand this over to Sabrina, and you can take us through the budget supplemental, the two discussions and decisions.
Yes, thank you. We have two budget supplementals tonight, and per Oregon budget law, we are required to obtain approval by council for new appropriations, such as revenue, that we have not planned in our current budget. If the supplemental budget is 10% or less, there's no public hearing that is required. And this evening, we are recognizing revenue and appropriating funds for the Ashland Parks and Recreation, as well as the Fire Department together, totaling less than 10% of the general fund and Park CIP. So we'll start with APRC first. APRC has received approximately $63,000 in grants that will be appropriated to various parks divisions and the Park CIP budget. And I just want to take a moment because I wanted to introduce our new Parks and Recreation Director, Rocky Houston is here tonight. And Rachel, you guys can come up if you want.
Welcome. Yes, it is.
For the record, Rocky Houston, Parks and Recreation Director. Thank you. Day two, so I'm still a little, you know, big doe-eyed, so, but thank you. It's been a been a pleasure, and I appreciate this opportunity.
So staff would recommend that we go ahead and recognize the revenue, and if you have any questions about the grants, I would allow Rocky or Rachel to answer those for you.
Counselor Bloom.
Thank you. Not a question, just a comment. Second day on the job and $62,000 in grants, that's got to feel good, right?
I worked really hard. I hope it's just many more to come, but no, it's Rachel and other staff that are doing a great job. And of course, the foundation is amazing, so.
Right. Thank you. Welcome.
And do you want to run these through as a single, a single version, right? So you'll go on to the next one?
All right. And so next, we're going to recognize that Fire has received $271,000 in logging revenue.
Oh, thank you both.
That will go towards the wildfire mitigation work presented last March. And I don't believe Chris is here, so I will make up answers if you have any questions.
Are there any questions? Counselor Hyatt.
Sabrina, the 271 is one installment of others that are anticipated. Yes?
Yes, but I do think we're going to fall short of our original estimated budget of 686, but we've adjusted expenses to reflect that shortfall, so we should be good in terms of cash flow.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Do you have anything else to report?
That is all. Thank you.
Okay. The floor is open for a motion. Counselor Kaplan.
I move to adopt resolution 24, 2024-21, authorizing a 2023-25 biennial supplemental budget.
Second.
Counselor Kaplan.
Thanks. It's always good to recognize the revenue.
Counselor Bloom.
I got my one good joke in some of it.
Any other comments? Roll call, please, Alyssa. Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And again, congratulations and welcome, Mr. Houston. It is great to have you with the City of Ashland. We move on now to the recommendation from SIRJAC. And the structure of this, we have a couple of people who have asked to speak, and so what we will do is we'll have the presentation from the committee and then questions from the council, and then I'll open, I'll bring those speakers up, and then we will have another opportunity for questions from the council before any motions go forward.
I'm just saying, this is our new staff person. For you people who don't know, Kari, I'm just telling them that I need these other, two other chairs for Allison Mandell and for Tara Houston, who are going to replace me as the co-chair, okay, for SIRJAC. So if this, you allow it, I would appreciate if they could be up here with me during the presentation for the things that we sent to you that were supposed to be heard in June.
Absolutely, and welcome. Thank you for your good work.
Thank you. So as, as you can see from the packets, in June, we had submitted for the June hearing a number of issues, and I appreciate Mayor and city councilors the opportunity to address you again, and to your availability, and to your commitment on social equity and racial justice issues. The two issues that you had given us to look at, the first one was that you had asked us to do a history or a review, and this was done by you, Mayor Graham, of the history in the City of Ashland regarding harm that was done with an eye towards, if you don't know the harm that was done, if there was harm done, and the history of that harm, then repairing it can be a difficult task because you don't know what you're out to do. So with that in mind, in, we repair, we prepared a report that was done, and this is off the top of my head, and then I'm going to turn it over to Tara Houston, who wrote a cover letter for May 15th of 2024, that is the update to the report that was prepared in October of 2023, because as we further reviewed it in committee, we felt that it desperately needed more context and more of an actual recommendation to this body rather than just giving you a report. So if you will permit us at this point, I believe that Tara would very much appreciate reading the cover letter to you so that everybody here knows what was in that cover letter. And at that point, we'd be glad to take any questions that you may have about the report before we turn to the DEI evaluation. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Hyatt, thanks for having us here today. The members of Ashland Social Equity and Racial Justice Advisory Committee wish to thank our colleague Barbara Garrity for her thoughtful and caring investigation into the history of the City of Ashland's treatment of historically marginalized people. Her connections with local sources and work with the Southern Oregon Historical Society are commendable and appreciated by our membership. We feel that some additional context and explanation may provide a deeper insight into the past practices of the City of Ashland and the need for repair with communities that were affected by local code. It's important in discussions of the past to recognize that no city is an island, to expand John John Donne's observation. Ashland's municipal practices may seem inclusive or at least non-discriminatory because federal and state laws were already in place, which created easy avenues to exclude and exploit Black, Indigenous, and other people of color, religious minorities, LGBTQ-plus people, immigrants, and other groups. A longer, in-depth study is recommended, and this author believes the scope and scale of this kind of investigation should be a compensated enterprise. The expectation of uncompensated labor to determine inequities perpetuates cycles of harm. Following please find specific responses to part of the research project and report. The contextualization provided here is in no way exhaustive. More research must be conducted to provide a richer and more accurate picture of experiences for historically marginalized people in the City of Ashland. Number one, in this section, examples, historical events, there is mention of the KKK marching in Ashland's Fourth of July parade. It feels helpful to provide an additional layer of context to this fact. The violence of Black exclusion laws in Oregon alongside slavery prohibition specifically designed to keep Black residents out of the state entirely resulted in an understandably low Black population from founding years forward. Due to the small number of Black residents at the time, the Klan's march in the early 20s was targeted towards Jewish, Catholic, and immigrant residents of the area. As Kami Horton reported about the incident in 1922, where a white resident of Medford was kidnapped and assaulted to inspire fear. The article entitled "A Century Ago: The Ku Klux Klan Terrorized Southern Oregon" goes on to share, "The Klan had only arrived in Oregon about a year before as part of a nationwide Klan revival, and in Oregon, many of the organization's main targets were white." Professor Daryl Milner of Portland State University's Black Studies Program says Oregon's Klan didn't focus on Blacks because there wasn't a Black, weren't many Black residents in the state. You couldn't build a movement against a population that was so small and non-threatening in Oregon. "They wanted to purify the schools by having the schools teach American patriotism," Horowitz says. "They supported immigration restriction laws. They wanted to clean up urban corruption that they attributed to Catholics and Jews." Despite influxes of Black residents in the 1940s attracted by work with the railroads and in support of Kaiser shipyards, the Black population of Oregon continues to trend lower than other states in the United States. Asian immigrants, mostly Chinese folks, settled in the Rogue Valley, finding work with Southern Pacific Railroad in the late 1800s, and were met with recorded episodes of racist behavior and exclusion. Nationally, anti-Chinese sentiments led to the passage of the Chinese Exclusion Act of 1882, which limited future immigration. By 1892, national legislation required immigrants to carry proof of residence or risk deportation. Peter Finkel's 2019 article on his Walk Ashland website follows the history of Ashland resident Wah Chung and the Chinese-American community in Ashland at the turn of the 19th century. In the article, he notes the following: "The City of Ashland had local discriminatory laws. For example, in 1883, the Ashland City Council passed an ordinance designed to keep out Chinese who might want to open a laundry business." And in quotes, "December 7th, 1883, China wash house or laundry to pay a license of $40 per year or the same rate for a shorter period." The atmosphere in Ashland for Chinese seemed to improve in the last decade of the 1800s and the first few decades of the 1900s. Despite this, Wah Chung's acceptance in the community was an exception. The majority of the Chinese in Ashland either spent all of their time out of town maintaining the railroad, or they seemed to have been nameless and little known in the larger community. Historical prejudice and legislation against Latinee, Latino populations, I'm sorry, Latino populations isn't well documented in this area. Their discrimination recorded in other areas may have happened here as well. Like Black and African-American populations, the U.S. targeted Latinee populations to support labor during World War II. Through the Bracero Program, up to 1,000 Mexican and Mexican-American laborers worked in the pear orchards of the Rogue Valley in the 1950s and 60s. Though much of the anti-Latinee action by INS in Oregon seems to be focused on the Willamette Valley and southeastern part of the state, it's possible that some Latinee immigrants may have been targeted in the raids and deportations of the late 1960s, 70s, as there's record of INS activity in Medford area. According to a frontline documentary in 1990, in 1989, 25% of farm workers in the U.S. were under the age of 16. This suggests that some of the migrant workers in the Rogue Valley were child laborers. Statistics obtained in Colleen Marie La Prinza's thesis, Hispanic Migrant Labor in Oregon, 1940 to 1990. Finally, in the section where we are now, the demographics of the City of Ashland were noted, and a more specific breakdown of race and ethnicity feels important in this context. So I provided details from the census website in comparison from Ashland to the United States as a whole. Because of this research, because this research has been approached in a less than systematic way, it's believed that a full review of Ashland's municipal code may be necessary to ascertain the full extent to which the rights of historically marginalized people may have been restricted by local government. No meaningful investigation was launched to determine the experiences of Native and Indigenous, Black, AAPI, and Latinee citizens of Ashland. Likewise, investigations on the experiences of religious groups and LGBTQ-plus citizens are incomplete. This cover letter is submitted alongside Barbara Garrity's research report with unanimous approval of SURGE committee members. It's so moved that we forward the Garrity report along with this letter to the City Council with these recommendations. Hire a historian, social worker, or other skilled professional to undertake a systemic and thorough investigation of the practices, policies, and historical documents produced by the City of Ashland across its history. This investigation should include Ashland's municipal code, minutes from all city meetings, and any other historical documents collected. All aspects of historical marginalization should be researched, including religion, race and ethnicity, age, class, immigration status, disability, gender, and sexuality.
Thank you. Questions? Is there anything else in terms of the, this initial presentation?
Regarding the historical documents that you requested we do, no.
And then we have the second topic.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So we are, we are discussing this, this first set of recommendations. I know we have people who've come here to speak tonight. I wanted to give a little bit of a, of a background because it's been a while since we had this conversation and set this work in motion. There are a lot of organizations, formal organizations like the City of Ashland, that are looking at their history in, as a body, to identify what, what the body has done over the decades, either in a positive way or in a negative way, in terms of inclusivity and, and helping people belong in their community. And so that was the initial, the initial request was to take a look at that and to see what could we find out with a, with a, an initial look at it, without doing a major investigation and a, and a significant investment. The goal being to understand that history and to look at it with clear eyes and in a straightforward kind of way, and then if we did find something, to open up a discussion with the larger community about what that looks like to, to make amends in the modern world, to, to heal that rift, whatever, whatever that might be. We don't know what that looks like, but the first step in this is to find out what does, what is in our history as a city council. And so looking at that really as formal things that the city has done, and, and many communities have formal policies that were put in place by their city councils to exclude people, to harm people, to drive them out. And so we wanted to first of all, find out to what extent were we dealing with that? And it looks like from an initial look, it, we don't, we haven't found anything, you know, really glaring, but it, from your recommendation, you're recommending that we take a deeper look. Is that the, the gist of it?
I mean, effectively, this was based on conversation and internet searches, right? It wasn't a review of municipal codes.
Yeah, it's very cursory look.
So it was super cursory. I think there is some evidence based on Peter Finkel's research that there were laws in place to harm particularly in that case, the Chinese population. But without a thorough investigation, it's actually hard for us to know, because it's not like those are the things folks want to share about Ashland, right? So if we're doing cursory investigations, the likelihood is we'll find the ways that we've succeeded and not necessarily the ways in which we've caused harm.
Great. And so we're receiving the recommendation this evening. That's what the, the purpose of the, the evening is. So we have two people who have asked to speak tonight, and I will call them up now, and so I'll ask you all to come back up after they have spoken. And the two speakers are Gil Livney and Lisa Horwich. You will each have three minutes, and again, Alyssa will give you a single chime when you have 20 seconds left of your time, and a double chime when your time is up. Yes, Emily?
Excuse me, Mayor. I just want to make sure I understand. So you're asking us to step aside, allow the public comments, and then come back up and talk about the DEI recommendations?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Lisa Horwich, and I'm a resident of Ashland. And I'm here tonight to speak to Agenda Items 12A and B, and urge the council to adopt the recommendations of the SURGE advisory with two amendments. To that end, I submitted a letter on July 14th with a proposed amended language, along with background and rationale for such a change. In February of 2023, this body took action to adopt a proclamation that took a stand against hatred of any kind, and specifically call out antisemitism, also known as Jew hatred, as something that would not be tolerated in the City of Ashland. I was in this chamber when that proclamation was read aloud, and you all voted unanimously to concur in its passing. Since the horrific acts of October 2023, the rise of Jew hatred has exploded globally and here in Ashland. The ability of this council to recognize this fact and to wreck the city, to consider among the topics for bias training and education, the topic of Jew hatred, antisemitism, is critical. When one speaks of religious tolerance, as noted throughout the SURGE documents, that reference is typically understood to equate to the freedom to practice a religion any way one wishes to worship, without fear of harm or more. Jew hatred is far more than religious intolerance. It is the systematic targeting of a people. There are many Jews who do not formally practice or worship. They simply are living among the community like everyone else, and yet these same individuals are often targets of hate we see in our streets, literally, here within our communities, schools, university, businesses, downtown Plaza Square, and more, read in the newspapers, or watch on the television news. When SURGE, when the SURGE advisory report and the minutes from their May 2024 meeting references religious tolerance, they too are minimizing the importance of addressing Jew hatred as a specific area of hate and bias that is occurring. It is simply insufficient to say religious tolerance. This phrase does not address nor capture the realities of what we are seeing and experiencing in this moment, a prejudice targeted at a people. My letter provides more detail and specifics along with the language to clarify and ensure any DEI education and ongoing historical research looking into implicit bias or racism towards a people which may exist in Ashland policy includes antisemitism. Thank you for your time and consideration of these important amendments. Thank you.
Gil Livney, I live here in Ashland for the last 20 years. I didn't want to come forward, but I decided to do that because I think it's important. Some of you know some of my stories. I can just speak about antisemitism as someone that have an accent that I don't hear, someone that is not maybe a good speaker, or someone have a hard hearing, but it's just Ashland, especially since October 7th, I get a lot of remarks. Some of it, people know, I had a bullet in my window, I had a swastika on my property, I had nails in my tire, but, so it's live and existing in Ashland. But I just, people don't realize even before that, as someone that has an accent and someone that is a foreigner that lives here, you get a lot of, some of it is ignorance. I mean, people will tell me I don't look like a Jew, or people tell me, even though you're a Jew, we didn't know you're actually okay. You know, people that I know, you know, people that are progressive, I mean, they'll come with that, they don't even understand what's the problem. You know, and, and I think that educating people about antisemitism and, and it's important. And as Lisa said, I'm, I'm not religious at all. My wife is not Jewish. I don't even, I probably sinned many times in my life. I don't know any of the Jewish holidays. I don't go to the synagogue, but still, people are targeting me when they find that I'm a Jew. I have like, when I call people, I have someone that needs to call for me because of my, it's nothing to do with the Jewish, actually, my accent, people won't take me seriously. People call for rentals, I own a lot of rentals property. If they hear my voice, it's an accent, many times they'll close the phone. So there's a lot of racist, and it's actually also the other side. I mean, you're talking about the sunset clause. I had a guy come to me because I'm Jewish, he thought I'm pro Netanyahu, whatever, I don't really care for him, but he was telling me how much he loves Israel, but he waiting for the sunset clause to come back, you know? This is conversation from three years ago here, exactly was in talent. Last month, someone stopped, I work in, I'm doing a job on Fifth and East Main with some of my guys, and the guy told me, came out and, and, you know, said Mexicans should go, we don't want Mexicans here. He said he probably doesn't know I'm a Jew. But, you know, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of thing going on, and especially after October 7th, people allowing themselves to say stuff, everything coming out of the box. So I think education is very important.
Thank you.
So if we can have the, the SIRJAC leadership come back forward, what we have at this point for the councilors is we have a recommendation that involves a financial request. We know we don't have this in our budget for this year. And so what, what we would be considering this evening is whether we want to direct staff to kind of put this in the hopper as a consideration for the next year's budget process that we'll be doing in the spring, so that they, they know to include that as something that, that we're interested in funding. It doesn't create a, a funding requirement for that, the council that will accept this in the, the budget committee, but that it would be something to be, that the council would like to see considered in that budget process. And the second piece of this is, do you want to make any amendments to what the, the language that is in the request around the study? Note that there is a second conversation that we will then have around the DEI and the training recommendation, but we want to handle this first recommendation first. And since it has, since it comes with it, a, a recommend, a funding request, the pathway that we would move on this is to direct staff to put it into consideration for the next year's budget process. Counselor Duquesne.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation, and thank you to our two community members that came forward. You're not alone. I would like to request staff to move forward, to put this in process for our next budget session, to be able to allot X amount of dollars, I'm not sure what that would look like at this time, to be able to have someone in the position to take the deep dive that's needed to get some answers in better direction, not only for SURGE but for Ashland.
Is there, so that, I'm taking that that's a, are you looking to put a motion forward?
That was my motion.
Okay. Did you, did you want to use the, the language that came to us in the recommendation, or are you interested in making any adjustments to that language?
I can make, I may, I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
To direct staff to put this on our budget agenda, to allocate money for the request for SURGE for an individual who is a social worker or someone skilled in DEI, to take a deep dive in the necessary information so that we can have better direction for SURGE and for Ashland.
Is there a second? Okay. Counselor Duquesne?
I've had the honor to work with SURGE, our newest committee, and it has been an honor, to see you grow your legs and to expand, and the opportunity that is in front of us is vast, and I believe that to be able to take the money that's needed will be well-served, well-spent. It allows SURGE to be able to come back with a robust agenda of what's needed, working with this individual, and this individual working with council. I remember before I was on council, and this was a write-up, and Emily worked with our now mayor and councillor Slattery and councillor?
Rosenboll.
Rosen. I'm pointing at this seat, yes.
Was rich.
Because the importance of that living document that is now actually in place, whereas we can actually use the actions from the individuals who live in our community to better our community. I feel this is much needed. We've heard testimony. I live here, I'm a Black woman, I'm a queer woman, I know what it's like. So, yes.
Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Counselor Duquesne. We are still We are still fighting racism in this, this country, on this planet, in this culture, and the more we learn, the, the better we can fight racism, the more we can educate our, ourselves and, and our children about our history, the, the more, the better we can move forward and, and create pathways for healing. It was just, this last year has been an incredible personal development for my, for my knowledge with regards to Oregon's racist history, and I really appreciate all the work that's, that's gone into getting that information out. And, and I'm, and I'm here ready to receive it, and I know others are too. I learned that during the Fourth of July, we used to have a big roundup in Ashland, you know, 14,000 people would come here, and part of the, part of the fun was, you know, playing cowboys and Indians as part of this big group with absolutely the most stereotypical horrible parade happening around that. And it's just an example of this uncovering of all of this that just is our terrible history that we need to own and face and heal up. So I, I'm happy to second this, and, and I appreciate the recommendation coming forward and, and the work put into it. So thank you. Thank you.
So I have a question. The, the language, and this is to Councillor Duquesne, the language reads all, part of that, that all aspects of historic, historical marginalization should be researched, including religion, race, ethnicity, age class, immigrant status, disability, gender, and sexuality. And there's been a request to include the words after race and ethnicity of including but not limited to antisemitism, to make sure that the antisemitism piece doesn't get lost in that, in the, in the various places where it might be attached. Is that something that you would be interested in, in terms of adding that language?
Yes.
And would you, would you then consider amending your motion to, to that effect?
Yes.
You could just say, I amend it to that effect.
I amend it to that effect.
We have it on video, so we can get the words. Councillor Hanson, are you supportive of that?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other, any other conversation for this? And I think, I just want to make sure that I understand, Councillor Duquesne, what we're asking staff is to, to put this into the list to see what this might look like. There's a variety of ways in which we might get this done. We don't know what it will cost, we're not formally approving it, we're just simply saying we want, we want to see what this would cost.
Exactly.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call please, Alyssa. Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Thank you. Now we move on to the second recommendation?
Yes. Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you, councillors. The second recommendation concerns the, that you, you all heard the report regarding the status of the DEI report and evaluation that was done for the city of Ashland. And as a result of that, and I just got to hear the city manager talking about some of the trainings that were going to be coming forward, which is music to my ears, and thank you, Ms. Cotta, for pointing that out. We had asked in our recommendation, because it was sent to us to look at it and then to give you our feedback, was one of the things on our work plan. So when we looked at it, and I read every page of the proposal, every page of the report, and listened to the presentation that was made to all of you, because I could not be there at the time, the thing that struck me, as well as my former co-chair in particular, Precious Yamaguchi, was that what was not included at all, in any way, in the report had to do with either race, ethnicity, that's a slash between the two of them, and/or religion. And I raised at the time that it also didn't include anything about antisemitism within the context of the recommendations that were made. And the reason for why this matters is because what, it formed the basis for what the employee trainings were going to be. So what the employee trainings were going to be, in particular, dealt with the findings regarding to gender discrimination and discrimination based upon either sexual orientation or sexual biological changing. That we were troubled as a committee by the absence of the notion of somebody's ethnicity was not in any way put forward by the consultants, particularly, as I said, from my co-chair, who is of Japanese ancestry, she's no longer on the committee. But that has historically been such a problem that it's just hard for me to believe that there are not employees at the city of Ashland who have somehow not incorporated that feeling of Asians, anti-Asian sentiment, particularly after COVID, into their, into their lives. I mean, maybe we're perfect, but I sort of doubt it. On the same hand, and I'm saying this, this is very hard for me because I have, I'm wearing two different hats, right? So I'm saying this, and I'm looking right at you, Councillor Duquesne, because I know that you go through this all the time. You wear two different hats in this world. So I'm now speaking as a Jewish person, and I'm following up on what the other speakers who could provide public forum without being constrained, as I am in my role in SURGE Act, to say. I know that there are people in this town, because I see them every day, who see me first as Jewish, and what does Emily think about that as a Jewish person? And don't see me as Emily, a person living in Ashland who can cry, does not sound too much like Shakespeare here, but who probably cries the same tears that everybody else does, and who probably has the same feelings of love that everybody else has, and just see me as slightly different, and since October the 7th, in particular, feel much more emboldened to say so. So the comments regarding Jews and money happen now all the time, in terms of almost on a daily or weekly basis. So in that role, I said, we really need to get antisemitism, as Lisa explained, also known as Jew hatred.
Okay.
Into these recommendations so that when it comes time for the training, it's included and it's not just ignored. Within the committee, there was the feeling, and particularly at the moment, that we needed to get something passed so that we could get it out of the committee and get it back to you so that you could start doing your jobs. And therefore, the notion of saying it would be religious tolerance got suggested, and in a political decision that perhaps was not the best political decision in 2020 hindsight, I said, I think we should get this to the city council with religious tolerance. I amend my own, and by the way, everybody in my committee who is on the committee is here right now in this council chambers, because there's only four of us now. So we've got Allison Tara, and we also have, there's John, here. What? Nita is not here, you're right. Nita's in India, so she couldn't quite make it. Okay. So I think including antisemitism, which, as Lisa explained, can also be viewed as Jew hatred, is crucial. And I'm saying that in, with all due respect to my committee, because I, I really believe that, and I believe that in particular now, based upon the reality of what life has been like for us since October the 7th. And I'm not just talking about all the graffiti on the street. As the other speakers said, I'm talking about how people now feel emboldened to say things that they would not previously say. So I, I hope that it's clear what we're asking for at this point.
Let me see if I can recap it.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I think I could use it. I don't want to be too emotional, but I think I could use it.
So we'll recall that when the consultant came back to us with the DEI report, we had a little bit of a conversation around the fact that the report didn't articulate a very detailed list of the types of things that we would be looking to train our people on. And when we asked them about that, what they said is they didn't want to, when you start to write a very detailed list, you start to exclude things that, then later people say, well, that wasn't on the list, and so therefore it can't. And what they wanted to do was to, to have a broad umbrella under which we could respond as a city to any particular issues that, that came up, if they just got the general categories into that space. And so that was the thinking behind that element. And now we know that a big part of what came out of that conversation and that analysis was to do additional trainings, both for our staff, and we have it for the city council as well, in our social equity and racial justice resolution that was passed in 2020, it also identifies us as wanting to make sure that we are properly trained. And so this follow-up conversation from the SURGE Act is, I think, very well timed because it is about refining that list and making sure that certain things don't get left off. It doesn't mean that, that it is an all-inclusive list, it doesn't mean we can't add other things to it as we go through the training program. But what I hear you asking for from the committee is that we include specifically that trainings address ethnicity, religious tolerance, and antisemitism. And so that would be the question to, to staff. Is there, is there anything that you see as a barrier to including that with the, the gender-based issues that, that you saw, that were specifically called out in the, in the report?
No, I don't see an issue. We will be focused on bringing the training we already have in process in first, and we will add this to the list.
Councillor Bloom?
This is a question for legal. I, I fully support this. My only concern, do we run into any legal issues where we're identifying, let's say, specifically antisemitism, but we're excluding, say, Islamophobia or anti-Krishna, anti-Hindu? Is there any, so that we can move forward and do this, do this right and not have any challenges? Does religious tolerance being included, does that cover us?
You could start, I can't really answer that question without, you know, going through some kind of research on it. I, I can't imagine if you're going to be adding one thing, or you'd have to add one more or one more, and I don't think that's possible, but if you are looking at specific issues that you are identifying as concerns, then those would be the things you'd be looking at.
Okay, great.
I will say that our biggest constraint will probably be our training budget, and our goal of addressing the issues that were brought up by the DEI assessment, as well as the internal issues that we are seeing just with operations, that will continue to be our priority, but we will take this into consideration while we're planning our training.
And I think we also recognize that the, the type of training that the city council and potentially the Ashland Parks and Recreation Commission receives will, will not be the exact same training as what staff receives. What we're trying to do is respond at the staffing level to specific things that we, that came, came, became apparent in the DEI report first, as you mentioned, Sabrina, and then to do these other elements alongside that. So what I'd like to do is just to, if anybody else would like to speak to it, or if anyone has any concerns about including these three items specifically so that they are highlighted in the training program, are there any concerns about doing that? Would anyone else like to, to speak to the issue? Okay. So what we have done is, is staff has, has the direction to include those three items. And as we go along and we work through this program, this is a new training program. We, a lot of our trainings got interrupted during COVID, and so it's, it's a new day in terms of training. And so as we go through this process, I think we'll be looking to the SURGE Act to also come back to us if there, if it looks like something else is being missed as we roll this out. Do you have any questions in terms of the priority or the, the way that we're moving forward with the training process?
Not at this time.
Okay. And, and we'll recall also that that, the DEI report was brought to us in a joint study session with the Ashland Parks and Recreation Commission. They have indicated an interest in being trained along with us with any of the trainings that come forward, so we will be reaching out to them and making sure that we put the, the elected leadership training piece together with them. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, point of order.
Yes.
Speaking to the, the report, there's specific language in here that I have concerns around that speak to current litigation involving APD. And there's language that is, well, it's conclusory language, that suggests wrongdoing on the city's part, and until that litigation is settled, I feel like that language should be removed.
If I may?
Councillor Duquesne?
I appreciate what you are bringing up, and I know that SURGE is aware of the litigation. This that was presented, and we did talk about this one word that would, could definitely be removed, and because of litigation, we weren't going to talk about that this evening, we weren't going to bring that up. All of this that's in front of us, that was given to us, this is something that is suggested, it's not in stone from SURGE. So that is one reason why I don't, I believe the committee did not bring that up because of litigation and also removing the trigger word.
Yeah, I understand that, and I appreciate that. I mean, I, you know, acknowledging that there is a lawsuit is completely fair. It is the, the, the specific language that, and it is in the packet, so it is relevant to what is being discussed tonight, and, and I think that the, that specific wording should be removed.
Well, when you click on to the actual video itself, and you can read the headline and what it says, it's my understanding that the individual was arrested in Ashland and then taken to Jackson County Jail, and that is where harm was, was, had taken place.
So we need to, we need to stop this conversation. What we have, Doug, this has already been put into the public record, correct?
Yes.
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 Okay. So it's already in the public record. I don't think that there is, there is a way to remove it from the public record, so it seems like we are where we are. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So we'll go ahead and, and move on then to the next item, which is the committee work plan update. And so we will start, actually, with, with the folks who are at the table, and we will move through the committees in the order in which they are in the packet. And we just ask each committee to, to take five minutes to update us. Essentially, this is a mid-year work plan. One of the things that the council is working to do is to create more of a, of a feedback structure with our committees that starts with the approval of the work plans in the, in, at the end of the year, and then includes this midterm report, see how things are going, let us know if you see a course correction that you think needs to be made, and then the, you'll, the committees will continue on with their work through the rest of the work plan year. So we'll start with the Social Equity and Racial Justice Advisory Committee.
So, Mayor and council members, on page one of the report that was submitted by Ms. Cotta, there are our list of things that we were given and our responses for what we've done and what we haven't done. And I really think that the most effective way to deal with this is we are here to answer any of your questions that you may have regarding the work plan and the action plan regarding what's been completed and what has not been completed. I would only point out one thing, which is the obtained DEI training for city council members, and then underneath it said not completed, and I believe should be removed from the action plan. That was me who wrote that, and the reason for why I said I believe that it should be removed is precisely because of what just happened. that it should be removed is precisely because of what just happened at the previous thing that we were talking about. And I understand that there is, that you will be looking at training for you and for the Parks Division. And Ms. Cotta's got it to add that sort of to the list of the trainings. And I really don't think there's much else for us to do on that, and that we've put it into play, and that we can sort of take it from there once we see what happens. So that was me who said that. Okay?
Yeah.
But anything else? Here we are.
And Sabrina, it is in the city administrators, in the administration's hands now in terms of identifying trainings for the council, correct? So that, that makes sense to, to remove it from the list.
Okay.
If, are there any objections to that? Okay. Are there any questions for the SURJAC Committee? I have a question. So we had talked about the, the, the DEI training program for local businesses, and, and we talked about developing that. But I don't know that it's so much developing it as potentially finding resources that our local businesses might avail themselves of. Is that something that the, that the committee might think about that's maybe a more appropriately scoped task than developing a training program? Is that something that, that we think is useful and, and a good use of the committee's time?
I think it's beyond us, frankly. I, I don't know the answer to that. And I think that Counselor Duquesne, for me to sort of do a lateral pass on this, had some ideas for local businesses and their staff. But I don't know, I don't think I understand what you're asking me.
So there are a variety of training programs that are out there and, yeah, for, for different types of organizations. And I'm wondering if, if the committee might compile the different resources that are out there for local businesses so that, that the local businesses could be given maybe a list, especially the local businesses that deal with the public, could be given a list of resources from the committee, you know, to encourage them to, to take action on their own, but not a formalized program?
It looks like Counselor Duquesne's going to bail me out.
Thank you, Mayor. I did speak with the chamber, Sandra Slattery, and there are, there is a list, a small list that's been put together. And something that we can do, well, SURGE can do, is to be able to, I can get the list, give it to SURGE, and then therefore that can be passed on to different businesses. So that the information is out there. It's available. I can give it to SURGE and then take it from there. Certain businesses were very, you know, yeah, gung ho. Some people didn't have the money for it. And the big thing was the pandemic, you know, kind of a revolving door of people, trying to keep people. If I spend the money and train the people, they're out the door. Now that we are months, years, year away from this, I think now is more the time to strike. Going back to the chamber, which I will do that, and get the list and see if we can make it a more robust list because it is out there. It's something that the chamber and I looked at years ago. So I can revisit that because so many people were hesitant because of the pandemic. No staff and a revolving door. Now things are more settled.
Okay.
It's a great answer.
Great. Any additional questions?
Thank you.
Or thoughts for the committee? Okay, great. Well, thank you so much for your update, and thank you for your good work. And we will move on now to the next committee, which is the Housing and Human Services Advisory Committee.
Thank you, SURGE.
Hi. I'm Echo Fields. I'm Chair of the Housing and Human Services Advisory Committee. We are busy. I, I do want to give shout-outs to Bob and Dylan for all the heavy lifts that you folks have been doing for us, you know, in the last eight months in particular. Very grateful to the support from council for our work. So our able staff person put together a great list, and I'm not going to read it. So I'm just going to sort of do broad strokes. So we've managed to pass through some money from Community Development Block Grant and Social Service Grants and Affordable Housing Trust Fund to a number of nonprofit organizations in the community. Had an excellent presentation from about a dozen of them who were awarded with the consent of council, awarded social service grants to help build nonprofit capacity, additional nonprofit capacity in the city, which is something we desperately need. So I'm particularly grateful for that. Let's see. The, probably the big thing that we, that we've been working on is the subcommittee of the Parent Committee, which is working on the master plan for homeless services. The, what we call the Parent Committee. This Thursday, we'll be receiving that final draft. And the Parent Committee will review it, and then will decide whether or not to make a recommendation to you all to accept the final version of that, of that draft plan. It is lengthy, and there's a lot of learning there. Let's see. So, yeah, yeah, okay. Long-range projects, looking at this list. One of the long-range projects is keeping track of the implementation of the housing production strategy. As we know from earlier in this meeting, having adequate housing is necessary for economic development in the community as well as for equity and justice. So what we're short of in this community are, is housing that real folks can afford. So part of what the housing production strategy includes is an equitable housing plan, which to be precise means providing diverse quality, physically accessible, affordable housing choices with access to opportunities and services at all price points for folks in the community. And that also includes education about fair housing. So there's a lot of overlap between what our committee talks about and what SURGE talks about around those issues. We are in the process of planning this year's quote-unquote rent burden event. Last year's event worked, went really well. So we're going to duplicate that structure again, where we kind of had a resource fair. And we've talked about what kind of resource tables we want to invite and where we might have that event. And that'll probably happen, I want to say October. Can't remember exactly. I have to look at the minutes to make sure that that's right. We're, we continue to support the development of a mobile home park zoning in the city because mobile homes, manufactured homes are the quickest way to provide really affordable housing for lower-income and modest-income folks. So that's an equity issue. So I'm hoping that will move forward. We'll be updating our consolidated plan, setting priorities for the use of our CDBG grant funding. And that's probably enough. Questions? There's a lot. Please read that master plan. It's been, it's been like getting a master's degree in not just homelessness policy, but really housing policy more broadly. So, yeah, we've got members of the committee working on the other committee for doing the site plan for 2200. We have other members of the committee who are working on the committee talking about land trust. So there's a lot of sort of intersecting committee work happening that we're involved with.
Great. Counselor Kaplan.
Yep. Thanks, Mayor. I, I don't have a question. I, I just echo you graciously, recognized Counselor Lumen in, in need for our support. But frankly, the work of the members of the committee is, goes far beyond what we were contributing, I would say. With the subcommittee meeting every two weeks, with you chairing that yourself, with the main committee you chaired. And as you said, there's interlocking other committees, advisory committees, then outside nonprofits that are doing other work on housing, really to try to, to grapple with this housing and homelessness issue. So thank you very much to you and the committee for everything you're doing.
You know, we want to, we want to be used as, as sort of in-house experts to the extent that we can serve you because we learn so much in those meetings, more than we can convey, you know, in a council meeting.
Counselor Bloom.
Yeah, thank you. I, I concur. I mean, we get to opine, but really, please take credit. You deserve it. And yes, all my colleagues up here, please read it. It's culmination of eight months of work. Please, for the love of God, read it.
And, and, you know, we took very, very seriously the responsibility to include diverse points of view, you know, diverse stakeholder groups to the extent that we could, and to try to write something that was fair and informative and as realistic as possible about a situ, you know, conditions that we know are beyond the, the capacity of a local jurisdiction to fix a lot of this stuff. But we got to do what we can.
Yeah, just, I have a, I have a question. But first, I, I just, I want to just reinforce the importance of how your committee has responded to this request from the council. When we purchased the property and we started to think about what the long-term use, the best use of that property would be beyond the emergency shelter time period, what we knew is we didn't have a plan to Tier Two. And, and we came to your group and we said we needed a plan and we need it in a very short period of time. We at least need a set of recommendations. We need you to point us in, in a, in a couple of directions of what would be really good uses for us to consider at that site. And the timing is working out beautifully. The, the 2200 Ashland Street Ad Hoc Committee is, is going, is taking up these, these draft, the draft recommendations that you have. It's slotting in very nicely to where they are in their conversation about that specific facility and that, that property. And we recognize that you all had a full plate when we asked this. It wasn't that people were sitting around waiting for council to, you know, come up with something for them to do. So thank you for taking that extra piece of work on and for doing such a good job and, and really, really bringing it in in the timeframe that we needed it for this larger conversation about that site.
Yeah. And I also, before I leave, I want to make a pitch for anybody listening out there to get in touch with Avram Sacks about volunteering at our cooling center. This has been a brutal month, and we still have August left to go. And I can tell you that getting some of those folks into an air-conditioned space has saved some lives. So please volunteer Avram's phone numbers all over the internet at this point.
I would just add to that. It's, it's a very, very easy thing to do. It, it's nothing. You, you get to sit around in air conditioning.
Yes.
And in the winter heating, which is, which is nice. And it's, it's, there's no issues. There's no problems. It's so easy. Everybody's just chill, relax, and it's a nice way to kill some time.
Yeah. And, and you really sort of get a connection with, you know, diversity in this community. And you can always talk to people about their dogs, which is what I do now. So everybody has pictures, has a phone, and everybody's got pictures of their dogs on their phone. And it's such a great way to just immediately establish rapport with everybody. So anyway, so please volunteer. And that's all. And speaking of dogs, I need to go now. I feel a little rude walking out before the other people present their, their work plans, but I have a dog that's waiting for me. So.
No problem. Thank you, Echo.
Okay.
We'll move on now to the Public Arts Advisory Committee.
Stuck to the chair. Hi, I'm Cassie Frescanis, and I am the current Chair of the Public Arts Committee, Advisory Committee. And kind of like Echo, I don't want to read you everything that we sent you, but I sort of.
Can you hold on just a moment?
Yeah.
Excuse me, sir. Dave, we just need to not have any speaking. Okay, go ahead, Cassie.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just going to go through what we've been doing and update you as well. And a shout-out to Jen Chenoweth, who's our staff liaison who drafted this for us and is excellent. And also Peter Finkel, who's here in the House tonight, who is not a member of the committee, but is at every single meeting and serves on multiple subcommittees. So we have kind of a couple different categories that you could put our work into. The first one is we have several community-driven projects that we've been working on, that we've been supporting, that have been brought to the Public Arts Committee. So the first one that we're still supporting is Ancestors' Future: Crystallizing Our Call, which is in the fundraising phase still currently, where the Crow Lights, which is John Pugh's mural, which will go up at the Elks Lodge Building, which is also still in fundraising. You recently approved the Playwright Walk Project that the Thaldens brought forth. So we're, that's really exciting because a lot of organizations and institutions that don't typically work together have come together for that, like SOU and OSF, Chamber of Commerce, Local Artists. So that's a really exciting new in-the-works project. So those are all, all have been approved and all are still in the works. We've got a few projects that the PAC ignited that we brought forth. We have three ODOT controller boxes, as you know, that were in the works, and we're hoping that those will be painted and installed with community engagement soon. We have the second map project, marking Ashland Places. We've designated the downtown area. We're working with the Historic Committee as well as Ashland Parks and Rec. And we are looking at putting something in the entryway to Lithia Park. And part of that project has been talking with Ashland Parks and Rec about sort of a streamlined process of how we put public art into the parks. So that is where we're at in that project. And then we've also seen the medallions going to the Railroad District, marking historical areas in the Railroad District. That was the closure of Map One. So that was very exciting. And that's sort of our recently completed, nicely wrapped-up and celebrated project. We have some things that are currently under sort of evaluation and discussion. One thing is the Story Map Project. I don't know if any of you have got, had had the opportunity yet of using the Self-Guided Public Art Walk Tour. But we also just distributed rack cards to the community. So we're just kind of keeping our eyes and ears open to how people are engaging with that, trying to spread the word about that, that it even exists now. That was a really exciting project we did with city staff. And then we are, we've heard the call, not just from you all, but from the community, to pay attention to the south end of Ashland. So that's a constant discussion around the table. And I think all of our minds are percolating. The next round of ODOT boxes, we really want to focus down there. How could we, you know, bring in crosswalk art down there as well? And then, of course, you saw the new crosswalk that went up, which was part of the beautification. It was, it was done beautifully with the city in collaboration with the Public Arts Committee and so quickly. So we're hoping for many more of those. So we're, we're discussing, are we going to navigate that with ODOT? Are we going to try to do that on crosswalks that don't have traffic lights so that we might be able to do it a little bit more expedited? And then the last thing that we've been discussing that you'll be hearing more about from us is that we want to make a budget line item for maintaining public art. We're seeing that some of our public artwork needs maintenance, and we haven't had a budget for maintenance. So that's something that we hope that you all start considering and that will be coming, you know, in the future to have more discussion around that. So I think that's everything. Feel free to ask away.
Counselor Bloom.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I just want to say that, you know, art is so fundamentally part of the human experience, and especially so in our community. And I really appreciate hearing us and, and putting a focus on South Ashland because those, the residents over there, myself included, we love art too.
Yeah.
And it's nice to not go too far to see some. So thank you so much for what you do.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Duquesne.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Cassie.
Hi, Gina.
I'm so happy to see you there. Hi, Peter, way back there. I, I too am excited about art on the South Side. You know, we talk about it all the time. And the upcoming new, hopefully, crosswalks would be wonderful. And I remember being at a meeting and, because I get to be the liaison, so I'm so grateful for that too. But I remember being at a meeting, and it was discussed about having X amount of dollars to be able to maintain the art that was already there. We talked, we were looking at mosaics at one point and trying to maintain that. And so my question is, is that would it be productive for the council to ask, give, ask for staff to? council to ask, give, ask for staff direction to implement that in the budget, what that would look like? I remember being at one of the meetings and you didn't kind of know what, how much that would be.
Yeah.
And we were just looking at the one mosaic, I believe.
Well, also, the velocity, the bouncing ball
Yeah.
in the alleyway that's currently sitting there waiting for maintenance. So, we've actually given the list to Public Works.
Okay.
They have the whole list of what our current art collection is, and they're also looking at what it might cost to maintain the artworks. And we've also, like the mosaic, we've reached out to the artist who did that, who's not local anymore. So, we're trying to figure out, how do we also commission people to come in who actually know how to do art and not just like a kitchen tile? So, that is also a tricky thing, is finding, like we were talking, it came up earlier, talent. How do we find people locally who can maintain it? So, Public Works is looking at that as well. And we are hoping to have sort of a ballpark number for you in that request so that we're not just saying, hey, will you put a line item out there? But we don't really know what that looks like.
Good.
So, hopefully, I think that our goal was maybe September is when you all start talking about it, to have more of a real number for you.
Remember.
Yeah.
Thanks, Cassie.
And staff's intent will be to have public art maintenance involved in the budget because we have now quite the collection. And so, we must kind of balance the purchase of new pieces with maintaining what we have. Yeah.
Maintaining what we have.
Counselor Kepin?
Yeah, thanks. On that same, on that same point, obviously, there, we've got quite a collection, and it does cost money to maintain and repair when it is broken or damaged.
Yeah.
I wonder if there's maybe a role for, and much of our art was given to the city. It wasn't the city that purchased it. It was given through the generosity of our neighbors. I wonder if there's maybe a possibility or a role of a foundation, an arts foundation, just like there is a Parks Foundation, that could also, you know, manage that and receive private donations for maintenance and repair.
We've had that discussion, too.
Oh, you have?
Yeah, we've talked about, could we start our own, you know, 501(c)(3)? For now, in the case of Micah Blacklight's sculpture, for example, the Ashland Parks Foundation is actually holding that fiscal sponsorship for us. And I think John Pugh has, and I don't recall who it is, maybe Peter does, but he has his own entity that's holding that fiscal sponsorship for him as well, I believe. So, you know, there's definitely been discussion about, could we just create our own, and what would that look like, and who would do that, and do we have the bandwidth to do that? And we'll probably continue to have that discussion. And as a final plug, Peter Finkel today put on his website, was it today?
Yeah.
The new crosswalk, he got to interview the artist who painted the newest crosswalk down by the park. So, I suggest everybody take a look at that.
Great. Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, and thank you, Cassie. This is, it's noticeable in our community, the increase in, in public art. And at least, I notice it, my kids notice it. And I love this idea about a private foundation. Certainly, we hear over time and time again that artists are leaving our community. And it's, it's such an integral part of our fabric, the arts community, to have here in Ashland. So, anything we can do to help facilitate more art, it sounds like a great idea. But thank you for all your efforts. I just wanted to say thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, great. Thank you, Cassie.
And I have to go home to children as well, and dogs, too. So, I'm sorry.
Everyone who needs to leave after they have done their presentation, it's fine. You're excused.
You're excused.
We move now to the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee. Is there anyone here? There we go. Perfect.
They're missing the best part.
[laughing]
Everybody who left already. Well, hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Shelby Sharon. I'm the newly elected Chair of the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee. I didn't know that this was part of the job description, so I'm a little nervous. But Derek Severson put together the bulleted list of all the things we've done in the last year, and I will just give you guys highlights. So, one of the things that's happened to the Historic Preservation Committee is that we've had kind of a decrease in building, which I'm sure you've noticed, in all the historic districts. So, we haven't had a whole lot of land applications to review in the last year. So, we've been kind of finding other ways to kind of get ourselves involved in, in Ashland and make history come alive for people. And that's my goal now as Chair, is to like find other ways to insert ourselves into it. Because same, we've been working a lot with public arts, actually. So, a lot of the things that Cassie mentioned, the sidewalk, Map Two, Map One, and the, all those projects, we're working on a lot with public arts. We're also, so we're developing a lot of the partnerships that we have. We've been working with Chamber of Commerce, Walk Ashland, SOU, and Public Arts as well. So, just trying to incorporate historic preservation into the rest of the community. We do still have Review Board Thursday afternoons, so the public can come in if they have just purchased a, if they are planning on doing anything with a historic structure, they can come in and talk to us Thursday afternoons. And we'll review their drawings and give them, we're trying to just be more of a resource rather than a regulatory, you must do this, must do that, kind of situation. But things we've done in the past year is every May, we have Historic Preservation Week, and I know some of you were there. It was pretty well-attended this year, but we give awards to historic preservation projects that are outstanding. So, people who have done historically compatible remodels to existing structures, or people who have built a new structure within the historic district that seems compatible with the historic buildings that are already there. So, this is an award ceremony we give every year. This year, we had three awards. Sometimes it's more like 10. But then, at that same, that same award ceremony, we held it down in Railroad Park and did a ribbon cutting for the Golden Connections artwork that was down there, as well as the medallions that were installed this last year, the bronze medallions. There's five of them in the Railroad District. So, if you haven't gone on, checked all those out, you really should. They're just really lovely. So, our next project is, again, to work with Public Arts and do the Map Two project, which we are looking at the downtown historic district. So, we're thinking that that project is an opportunity to both bring in a piece of public art as well as commemorate Ashland's history. So, we're thinking about the entrance to Lithia Park, but that's still, you know, to be determined. But then, once we figure out what that initial artwork piece will be, we will have other pieces to commemorate downtown monuments. And I'm not sure what those are yet. I'd like to see more medallions. Maybe there's more little subtle signs, something like that. But it's really a way to connect, to let people know what Ashland's history is and to connect them to the place. Our last chair participated in a heritage tourism conference last February, which was held in Tallent. And so, she went down there with a woman from SOU who does heritage tourism planning. So, she has this whole document that she's been working on as a resource to encourage tourism and economic development around the history of our community. So, one of the things that we would really love to do is do sort of a similar story map kind of thing with your phone. You could go around and you could say, hey, what is that building? And you could like look at your phone, and it would tell you. And then you'd walk a few more feet, and it would take you to the next one. We don't have a budget, so if I can ask for something, like Public Arts has a budget. We don't have a budget at all. So, like, nothing. Like, we're just volunteers. We're doing the best we can with what we've got. We had put out some postcards that we mailed to people who had just recently bought historic properties. And it was just a postcard saying, hey, welcome to the historic district, and if you have any questions, please call us. And there's all these resources that we used to have brochures that we could pass out that said, there were like, you know, how to replace the windows in your old home, or how to upgrade the wiring without ruining everything. You know, and, you know, what are some of the historic things you need to think about when you have an older home? But we've lost all those. I mean, I should say, we've passed them all out. They're gone. But now I don't have a budget to make new ones. So, it's like little things like that that I might like to do in the next year. Just a plug. What else have we done? That's kind of the main thing. It's a really great board to be on. Any questions?
Counselor Dale?
Not a question. I just wanted to say, Shelby, just, I'm so glad and thanks for all, shout out to Beverly and all the work she's done. But this is, I get the pleasure to serve on this committee. And this is a committee that you, that just flies under the radar, to be honest with you, and just does incredibly good work. We've talked a lot about historical context tonight and tying this community together. This is a, a committee that, the institutional knowledge on this committee is
Phenomenal.
phenomenal. And, and, and this is the shout out to Public Arts and the surge and to planning and to, this is a committee that can work with other committees to be able to do some really cool things in tandem. So, thank you all for all of your work. It's so fun to watch the emails fly and what you guys are working on. So, it's very much appreciated.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it.
Other questions or thoughts? Counselor Hyatt?
Just a quick observation. We've heard four committee reports, and in three of them, Mr. Finkel's name has come up.
[laughing]
And I think that's pretty special because it's almost like we have a, we have a beautiful thread that's running through this work. And I just want to take a moment to recognize that and that our community and our volunteers see the valuable resource that you are and that it is appreciated. So, thank you for coming tonight and support, and thank you for your continued work in our community and across our commissions.
And we look forward to seeing you in December.
Oh, boy.
In case no one told you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Planning Commission.
Good eve, good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name's Lisa Werner, and I chair the Planning Commission. And I believe Brandon gave you a two-sided page of all the information that he put together on things that we've done the last six months. And I'll briefly go over that. We've reviewed and approved Parks Trails Open Space Plan Map for adoption and forwarding on to you. We've reviewed and approved the Billable Lands Inventory, which you acted on tonight. And we've reviewed Street Rideaways, which you also acted on tonight. And we generally deal with Type One applications when there's been an appeal of staff decision, and it's appealed to the Planning Commission. We had one of those two weeks ago. And we do Type Two decisions, which are Planning Commission decisions. And then we do Type Three actions, which are recommendations to the council. In study sessions, we've had a good update on the Conference of Plan, the housing element, transportation element, air, energy, water conservation element, and the Climate and Energy Action Plan. And we've studied new state legislation for long-term projects. We are going to be looking at the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Act again and make a recommendation to you. We also are going to be looking at the Economic Opportunities Analysis, the Manufactured Homes Zoning Ordinance, the Southern Oregon University Master Plan, and the ADU Incentive Program. And those are, are all with staff now being organized and consultants are being hired. And so, we will be looking at those in the next few months, probably, hopefully, by December. So, we are, we serve at, at, when somebody has, when somebody applies for something. So, there's been a noticeable lack of people applying for things now. So, we haven't been that busy this, this, these six months. But I hope it'll pick up, and I hope we do have more development here in town. So, that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Hyatt? Thank you. You may say, Lisa, that you haven't been that busy, but I think the page count was something like 700 on the last packet. I just want to take a moment to recognize our Planning Commissioner, our Planning Commission Chair and our Planning Commissioners. They do do exceptional work for our community. It is an extensive study, and you have to have a depth and breadth of knowledge to address these Type One appeals, Type Two, and Type Three items. So, it is with gratitude. I learn a ton as your liaison. I appreciate the depth and breadth of work and the time that you invest in those packets. It is considerable, and that work is appreciated. So, thank you for coming tonight, Lisa, to share.
You're welcome. You are right. That was a big packet.
[laughing] I think they're always big packets.
They are.
Any other questions for Ms. Werner?
Great. Well, thank you again for your great work. Thank you for the update. And we just so appreciate the work that you all do. The Planning Commission, as Paul, Counselor Hyatt was mentioning, it's, it's got a little bit of a different structure because it's a quasi-governmental committee that we have, or commission that we have. And so, we so appreciate that you and other folks are willing to dive into that level of detail and, and make those decisions on, on our behalf in this community. So, thank you.
I think it's great fun.
[laughing] I'm glad you do. Transportation Advisory Committee is next?
Can I last?
Nope.
Sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Scott is not here because usually he's my backup pun person. I'm not very good at off-the-cuff stuff. So, I have a 10-minute presentation that I was going to give you. I sent it to Alyssa, so you can read it later on. It's great pleasure that I'm reporting the goals for the action of the Transportation Advisory Committee's work plan for the remainder of the 2023-25 biennium. On this date in 1935, the world's first parking meter, known as Parkometer Number One, was installed in Oklahoma City. Nearly 100 years later, our own community, through the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities' rulemaking, still observes the dictum that there is no free parking. I go on to thank all of the commission members. I thank my two liaisons. I thank Sabrina Cotta as being a wonderful interim city manager. I thank Alyssa for being a wonderful recorder. Liz Breckerich, our recording secretary, I thank her. Also, hats are off to Steve McClellan, who, McLennan, who is now able to come to our meetings and talk about the mean streets of Ashland. We also want to thank Dorinda Cottle and the Communications Team. Now that our near-miss self-reporting survey is now front and center on the TAC page on the new website. Also, to thank GIS team led by Leah Light in developing the reporting survey, and also Jamie Blankenship on our ongoing bike inventory project. We continue to eagerly and anxiously await the beginning of the Transportation System Plan Update. We still haven't heard from ODOT if we are going to start it. Scott had a discussion with them on Monday, and I don't know what he found out. But it's really important that we get this going. As you know, I've talked to you about it for the last, I think, five years, and we're still waiting. It's an 18- to 24-month process, and we involve the entire public with it and incorporate all things from the evacuation time estimate study to the Climate and Energy Action Plan and Safe Routes to School. We continue to review capital improvement projects as we're charged, including the completion of the Ashland Street Rehabilitation with its solid green bike lanes, bike boxes, and bollards, and the final design and construction of the North Mountain Rehabilitation Project and the Nation Oak Street Rehabilitation Project. Of current note is the progress on the B Street Corridor and Safety Analysis. The city has hired Kittleson and Associates to conduct a comprehensive study that includes data collection, public engagement, analysis of former plans that have touched on B Street. I won't name them all. And, but most importantly, the B Street Neighbors' application for traffic calming. A walking tour and charrette were already held with B Street Neighbors, Kittleson, Public Works, and the TAC. The up-and-coming meeting this Thursday, 6 to 8 o'clock, in-person, we have two in-person meetings a year. You can all join with us, and the Kittleson will be presenting the work that they are doing to provide us with a bike boulevard along B Street. In keeping with the council and city administration efforts to improve communication, Scott Fleury and I gave a presentation regarding the TAC work plan and a thorough explanation of how transportation capital improvement projects are formed, designed... how transportation capital improvement projects are formed, designed, sliced, and diced through public engagement, prioritized, funded, and finally constructed. In return, we ask that the Planning Commission present the TAC with an overview of their process, their quasi-judicial process. We leave time in our meetings to talk, to have reports from other city commissions and committees, and RVTD, and recently, we were approached by a representative of SOU, which I'm really excited about. Most of the members are assigned as liaisons. We have also been working with CPAC on items regarding the transportation element of the Climate and Energy Action Plan. In addition, the TAC Chair also participates in monthly conversations with other commission and committee chairs. Communication with Ashland citizens and with citizen advocacy groups has always been valuable in supporting and directing the work we do as a committee in advising the council. Engaging the public in their vision for a transportation system that is safe and effective with robust conversations at the development stage of projects and programs that will eventually be presented to council makes for a healthy, transparent, resilient community. Call me anytime if you have any questions about all the stuff that we did. It's on this big list out here that we put in here.
Yeah, and we have it in the packet. It is a considerable list.
Yes. And we're actually checking things off.
Yes.
I mean, it's...
You are.
We're doing good work.
Council Dale?
Lynda, you're awesome. Thank you so much for all the good work at the TAC. I just, just a little quick comment. I think about you often. It's kind of a part of the transportation, a subset of transportation is the airport. And I spend a decent amount of time out there, right?
I have.
And so, as I fly around with my students and next set of pilots, we spend a lot of time in what we call the traffic pattern, which is just our rectangle. And I just want you to know firsthand that I can see the green stripe on Ashland Street from space. So, it is outstanding. I've been watching that, actually, and a shout-out to Scott and all of Public Works for getting that. But it is, I mean, you cannot miss that. So, thank you for the hard work of the TAC and getting that in, and safety for cyclists and so forth.
Yeah, and I want to give a shout-out to Streets for Everyone, who marshaled their troops and made it possible for us to really push that forward for the safety of everyone on the road.
Any other questions? Council Hanson?
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Lynda. I don't have a question, just praise. The Transportation Advisory Committee is, it's a three-ring operation. It's not a circus, but it's where the rubber meets the road, right? I mean, the CIP budget for the implementation is large, and the multi-jurisdictional complexity is great, and the demands of our citizenry upon us is huge. We have, and this body loves to throw work to this committee. So, just thank you to all the committee members. Are incredibly knowledgeable and passionate and on board, and you are, you know, organizing this three rings that are getting a lot done, and it's making our community safer and more climate-friendly and more affordable. And I just have a ton of gratitude. I've learned a lot, and I appreciate all the work that's going on. So, thank you, and good luck to us as a community rolling out all these aspirational goals that are now actually being built.
Thank you.
Yes.
And what Lynda didn't mention is the fact that that monthly gathering of chairs is organized by Lynda. So, thank you for doing that. I've been part of some of those conversations.
I need the two new people.
Yeah, I know you'll get them.
I will.
But I appreciate that because I've been part of some of those conversations. I attend when I can, and that cross, the cross-conversation to help each other know what the big issues are for each one of them, it's really fertile, and it is helping all of the committees do their work. So, thank you for that extra bit of organizing, and thank you and the Transportation Advisory Committee for all your good work.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So, we have the Climate and Environmental Policy Action Committee. It's, you'll have that as a separate attachment in your emails, but yes, welcome.
Hello. Howdy. Good evening, everyone. Mayor Graham and the members of the Ashland City Council, thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Mark Morrison. I am the Vice Chair of the Climate and Environment Policy Advisory Committee, also known as CPAC for short. I'm here to present our mid-year report and highlight our key accomplishments and future plans on behalf of Chair Brian Soul, who could not make it here tonight. First and foremost, we'd like to emphasize our strong partnership we've developed with our city staff liaison, Chad Woodward. Can't say enough good things about him and all the great work he's done. Our Chair, Brian Soul, meets with Chad at least twice a month to strategize and employ and explore ways to implement our climate, our city climate and energy plan. And it's also worth giving a shout-out to our two fantastic city council liaisons, Jeff and Bob, and all of the great insight you guys have given us into various, basically everything that's going on with the city and politics and just general vibe, I'd say. It's been the most important thing. To touch on one point, administratively, one large thing that's changed in the past six months with our committee is that we started implementing work-study sessions. So, there, that's more of like a, for more impassioned individuals within our committee are able to explore and work on issues in a more focused manner that's not going to be, you know, stymied down by the multitude of things that we're all covering in the monthly meetings. And that's led to a lot of good work getting done, and we're seeing acceleration of a lot of our tasks accomplished. And speaking of those tasks, we have made significant progress in several high-priority areas. The first one is building electrification. We've recommended an ordinance for electrifying new residential construction, which the council has directed to staff to develop. We're also investigating incentives for electrifying existing structures, focusing on a carrot rather than a stick approach, as we found that might go over a little better in Ashland. Number two, to follow that up, we've been exploring and finalizing a lot of funding for these green energy projects. So, we're close to finalizing a $10 million zero-interest RSP loan, the Rural Energy Savings Program Loan from the USDA. It's actually already been approved by the USDA, so we're just finalizing details on implementing that administratively. And that's going to give Ashland residents a very, very low-interest loan to implement green energy projects within Ashland and help get a lot of those upgrades that we're talking about on their own properties at a very cheap and affordable way. Chad Woodward has also secured two $50,000 EECBG grants for, one is for the Electric Car Share Program, and the other one is for the Home Energy Score Training. That's a total of 100K of money that's coming into Ashland now. And on the Home Energy Scores, I have to give a shout-out to our committee member, Kat Gould, who spearheaded these efforts in revitalizing a partnership with the Rogue Valley Reotor Association. So, the Home Energy Score is kind of described as a miles per gallon for your house. It's a quick and easy way to, for homeowners or prospective homeowners to understand how energy-efficient their home is and their appliances, and then, you know, ways that they can improve that. Number four is our Small Engine Study. We're examining regulations to promote the switch from gas-powered equipment to electric line equipment, and we're looking at models from other cities. This becomes more and more important, not only as the years go on, as our fire risk increases, but also as a public health standpoint, as we learn more about the health implications with two-stroke equipment in our cities. And we're working closely with large organizations in Ashland, such as the Ashland School District and the SOU, as to be community leaders in this switch-over and push. The next thing we have, the last one, is transportation. We're exploring ways to make Ashland more bike and pedestrian-friendly, recognizing that transportation is a leading cause of our greenhouse gas emissions. Efforts on this have been led by Gary Schaff and Shannon Dorman in conjunction with our Transportation Committee. Looking ahead, we plan to, first, focus on reducing greenhouse gas footprint in Ashland's municipal operations; two, prepare for the upcoming Vista Franchise Agreement renewal in 2025, which is coming a lot sooner than we think. That's, we have to get those changes submitted by May of 2025, four November. And number three, launch a comprehensive education program about building electrification and energy efficiency, leveraging new sources of funding from federal programs so that people in Ashland will be able to not only take advantage of these new sources of funding coming down, but know exactly where they should be focusing and what decisions they should be making for those home energy upgrades. We're committed to helping Ashland meet its climate goals, and we, at the CPAC, appreciate your continued support. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Do we have any questions?
So, okay, no questions, really. Jeff and I spend a lot of time in these meetings. As Mark said, this, the committee has started having work sessions, study sessions, so those take a lot of time. I should say, this is a larger committee than most of the committees, the advisory committees. I think it's 13 or 14 members, and that was because it was created with, by fusing two committees together. So, that, you know, allows the committee to take advantage of, you know, spending some time on some specific issues in a lot greater depth. So, it allows them to do that. They're working on a lot of different tasks, all within the context of the Climate and Energy Action Plan, and there's very lively discussions during the meetings about all of the different ins and outs of greenhouse gas emissions. So, thanks to Mark, and thanks to Brian in absentia for all the work that this committee's doing, really for our community.
Great. Council Dale?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mark, so good to see you here. As Council Kaplan said, it is just so fun to see. We talk a lot on CPAC, as we do, and we see it, you know, week in and week out in council sessions, from folks talking about our future. And we're looking at, I'm looking at it right now, looking at you, and I just want to let you know, your leadership, coming onto the committee, serving as Vice Chair, jumping right in, bringing balance, bringing novel ideas, bringing interesting topics, and letting us beat up ideas, and, you know, Bob and I jump in a lot, and even though we're council liaisons, we're supposed to be, we're supposed to liaise, I guess the verb is, we get kind of involved in this. So, thank you so much for your, for putting up with us and your leadership. It's just outstanding to see this next generation of people contribute to our community. Well done.
Thank you, Jeff.
Council Bloom?
Yeah, I just, I'd like to echo that. I heard you were recently appointed as Vice Chair, and you killed it up here. So, great work, and hopefully soon, maybe you'll join us up here. That'd be nice.
Yes. Great. Well, thank you so much for coming and for offering the report. We appreciate the good work that everyone is doing there, and thank you all for coming out this evening and staying this late. We also appreciate that. What you'll also have, councilors, in your packet is a report on the Ashland Parks and Recreation Commission, which is also a commission of the city, but is a very different structure, as we know. It has its own elected body. They don't come and report to us in the same way, but we do want to keep a record of what they're doing alongside the other commissions and committees, and so you'll see that in the record there. We have one last item here, and I don't, we're not going to get through all of it, but I think it would be helpful for us to get as far down this list as we can get. And so, you'll have in front of you, we've got the job descriptions that we're looking at for the city manager and for the city attorney. And let's focus on the city manager this time. It's the first one in the line. And what you've got in the packet is two documents. One of them is the city manager job description, which is really the piece that we focus on. And the second piece is, it's the, what would you call that, Molly? What's the word? It's sort of the prospectus, almost. It's what the last recruiter's put out in the world. It's bigger. It's got more information about the community and other types of items. And so, we really want to focus on the city manager job description final that is in your packet. It isn't as pretty, but what we're looking for tonight is a relatively recent job description because we had the last process a couple of years ago, but wanting to see if there is anything that anyone on the council feels like needs to be updated or changed in this job description. And what, Molly, I'll go ahead and hand it over to you, but just, you know, to orient us in terms of this being the next step in moving the process forward.
Yes. So, once we get a recruiting firm, we will give them this approved job description, and they will take that and make their brochure to circulate throughout the country, basically. So, I have my red pen here, so I'm ready to go.
Council Hyatt? Did you have your hand up?
Is it a point of order? I'm happy to allow you to go.
We're not a point-of-order question. You had a point of order.
Oh, I was going to jump right in. I was ready to go. I had two things quick to provide to Molly.
Right. And so, we also may end up needing to put a motion on the floor. So, but let's see where we go.
I just had a question, really, about what you just said, Molly, that the, with this job description, then the new recruiter will create the same thing that was created, the prettier document?
Yes.
Can we maybe save some effort and give them that as well so that they can not recreate the wheel, because it was just created a couple of years ago?
It depends on the recruiter. So, they're going to have their own...
Style.
Yeah, their own formatting and their own style, like you said.
Okay.
So, we need to focus on the...
Job description.
The job description, yes. Okay. Council Hyatt?
The additions that I think need to go in include if, I know we're not looking at the city attorney, but on the city attorneys, it said dedicated to DEI, and I think we need to have a piece on that in the essential job functions. Also, under essential job functions, I think there needs to be a call for emergency management skills. I think we have seen the need for that, and I know Interim Director Sabrina Cotta has set a protocol forward for us that we went over in the retreat, and I think being able to navigate that is an important skill set for this role. And then, finally, where it says, "With exception of APRC employees, elected officials, and appointed officers of the city council," I'm curious if the city attorney should be included in that exceptions list. That's the totality of my feedback.
Okay. So, in order for us to make sure that we're sending back guidance as a body, are there any concerns about adding the reference to DEI? Are there any concerns about adding the reference to emergency management as a necessary skill? Doug, do you have any, or Sabrina or Doug, are there any concerns about adding the city attorney to that list of exceptions? No? Okay. Any concerns from the council about adding the city attorney to that list? Okay. Any other thoughts about what needs to be changed in the job description? Okay. So, do we, Molly, do we need a formal motion to accept this job description? Yes. Yep, I thought we did. So, the floor is open for a motion. Council Hyatt?
I move to approve this job description with the changes as articulated.
Second.
Council Hyatt?
I feel a little bad because all we did was add. We did not take away. But when the standard's getting set high, you know, what can you say? So, yes, with that, I just make the motion.
Council Bloom?
Yeah, we usually just add, so that's standard.
Any other comments? Council Duquesne?
Reading, we are approving the amendments made to the job description, and that's it at this time.
That's it. That all we're doing is updating the job description.
Okay.
Yep. And given our timing, we will pick up the rest of this topic at our next meeting. But if we can get through at least this job description tonight, that would be helpful. Okay. Any further conversations? Any questions? Okay, roll call, please, Alyssa?
Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And thank you, Molly, for prepping this up for us and helping us move forward with these recruitments. With that, the meeting is adjourned.
Mayor? With the recruitment or with the verbiage?